In our community first and and get through everything that is facing us right now. I mean, that's why we're all here. That's why we are all voted here was to do what's best for our neighbors and our community for the short and long term. And let's just focus in today for the next several hours and try to get these goals accomplished. With that, we again have Sarah Singer Wilson with us to lead us in our discussions today. I know we've all really enjoyed working with her over the last couple of sessions. And we look forward to doing that again today. So with that, Sarah, go ahead and take it away.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Great reminders. Well, I, yes, we have our work cut out for us today. So let's just dive right in and take a look at the agenda. Everybody on council, you should have received the link to the virtual mural board. If you want to join us there, you're welcome to. And Jeff and Jordan, if you guys could forward that to staff. Let's see, and I will bring up our board here. All right, can everybody see that? As I zoom in. So Agenda Day Three. So here we are. So today, our outcomes, we're going to focus on, we're going to just take a quick glance to reorient ourselves to the context discussion, the vision and the goal mapping ideas that we left off with from the last time. So just a quick reorientation towards that. And then we'll jump right into talking through those ideas and get council agreement on which, on which goals, which of those ideas are going to move forward as goals. And then at that point, there may be some refinement needed to make sure that the goals are clear and that staff understands the outcomes and the strategies that the council is zeroing in on to move those things forward. And then we'll prioritize the goals and and develop a team agreement for how to move them forward. So those are the the four things that we are going to focus on today. So our agenda, we'll start with, we'll do a quick, just recap of the process and our ground rules. You know, as I mentioned, talk about that context, just check in with that really quickly and then get into that goal refinement discussion. We'll take a break at 11:20. That'll give me time to set up, make sure we have your exercise all ready to do the prioritization piece. And then after, we'll have about an hour to to get through the prioritization. I don't know if it'll take that long, it may go faster, but we'll see. And then do wrap everything up with a reflection exercise that will focus on that team agreement discussion. And then make sure that we have clear understanding of the next steps and and wrap everything up by one o'clock. So roles this time, a little bit different. So again, I'm going to keep us focused on the agenda and achieving those outcomes. I'll use the ground rules. We'll definitely, some of those will come into play today as we, as we think through, you know, how things are going to move forward. And I'll talk about that more in a moment. Move, somebody's playing around on there. And then the council, your roles, your role is the same to be able to set that policy as, as the mayor mentioned, focus on Sandy, bring that community perspective forward. And then staff's role today is really a little bit different. And we've had a lot of staff participation in the first two sessions. And today they're here to provide some technical expertise. And then to really listen and ask for clarity when needed on council direction. But this is really the council's role. This is the important part of council participation is to make sure that we get those, that clear agreement on the goals and your desires on the prioritization. So it's going to be a little more council centric today than it has been in the past. But we certainly, staff's role is still important to make sure that we are getting that clear direction. So just to reorient to our ground rules that we set. As we, you know, again, patience with the technology. I know we've had power outages and all sorts of interesting challenges with the weather. So if you need any help or having any issues, just let me know so that we make sure everybody can can continue to participate. You know, we'll move through these conversations with respect as we have been doing and provide space for people to be heard. We'll keep the history in mind, but be open to change and a new course. Terminology, if there's any, any explanations needed, please don't hesitate to ask to make sure we all stay out of, or make sure we stay on the same page. We also want to stay out of the weeds and and stay at that big picture level. So focus on those policy outcomes. Let's see, think local, keep Sandy in mind and what we can impact and lead on here. Be upfront and honest. The intention is to clarify and it's okay to respectfully disagree. That's totally normal. Assume positive intent. You guys all have the best intentions for, for your community. And so just remember that that's a good positive thing, even if there, there may be some disagreement along the way. And then finally, this rule will be important today. This is where it'll come into play is that goals are going to move forward with consensus or majority support. So as, as we start to get into that refinement process, I'm going to be asking counselors to to raise their hands if they're in agreement with something. If the group's not, if there's not consensus or majority, then we'll put it in the parking lot and you guys can pick it up at another time. But that means that the group's not in agreement to move it forward. So, so I don't want to, again, we have limited time today. I don't want to belabor a point that there's not agreement on. So we'll just have to agree to put it off to the side and and keep moving forward. Any questions about that? We got a question from Council Hockenson. So do the goals need to be shared and approved in a council meeting prior to taking effect? Or can staff run with them after today? Jordan, do you want to respond to that one? Process wise?
Sure, yeah, usually what we do is, I mean, it kind of depends on how much progress we make tonight. But we usually always come back at a council meeting for formal adoption of goals. There's often like a little bit of refinement that we need to do, like wordsmithing or something. There may be a request and maybe tie some of the goals to our work plan and, and, you know, maybe further expand upon, you know, tasks and schedule and things like that. But yeah, we, we always have, usually takes maybe a couple of weeks. But at the next council meeting, we'll bring back the goals for adoption.
All right, good question. One more thing I want to do is just reorient us to our process here and where we are. So we talked about this at our very first meeting. We sent our attention. We did some extra, an exercise to align with the city's vision. So we kind of got in that future state of mind and talked about, you guys did an exercise to imagine the vision 20 years from now. Part of that was for this goal setting and partially that was for, to get you guys geared up for your comprehensive planning efforts that are going to take place. So that was a twofold exercise, our twofold purpose there for that exercise. We took a look back and talked about accomplishments, talked about what you guys wanted to build on. We reviewed the context, so thinking about challenges that you guys are facing, opportunities or strengths that can be leveraged. We, and then last time, we ended with gathering up all of the ideas. So again, thinking about what, what goals or strategies are going to help move you guys towards the vision? What new ideas should be considered? So today, we are going to zero in on this refinement of the goals and the actions and then get us geared up to be able to make a plan and bring that back to the council for adoption, as Jordan just mentioned. Let's see, any questions about that process? Back to our agenda here. So just a quick, let's just do any, just quick team check in. How's, how's everybody feeling about the process? Any questions, concerns or general excitement that you want to share as we move into today's work? Yeah, Carl?
Yeah, I submitted an extra goal last week. Actually, it was late Friday afternoon, so I don't know if it got made in to your process. But was there other goals that were added to the ordeal this past week or two while we've been since our last meeting?
No, there haven't. Again, I just tried to take all those ideas and kind of look at the themes and start to refine them into a list to organize it a little better for today's discussion. And I did receive your comments, so I have it noted when we get to that, that place on the chart. I didn't add it into the chart, but we'll, we'll talk about how proposing additions and changes and and anything that needs to be removed as well.
All right.
So thanks for submitting that. Yeah, Mayor, and then Kathleen?
Yeah, my only thing is, is I see a lot listed under goals right now. And I think it's great, it's what we want to do. But I just, I would love to see us narrow in and focus. I think back to Tyler's comment, and I think in our last meeting, which was, you know, that he really appreciated on the staff level having, you know, some real solid directions, some core values and stuff that staff was running towards. I just, I think that's going to be really important. And not that anything on that list is not anything that I don't want to see accomplished, right? We want to accomplish all of them, but we've got to set priorities and and focus in on, on achievable stuff. And I would just end with measurable, right? I just, I really would like to see some goals in there that six months from now, a year from now, we can look back and say like, did we move the needle, right? Not just like, hey, we want a better traffic flow through town. And then we can kind of debate, did we accomplish? Did we move the needle on that? I want something we can actually track and say yes or no, you know? Didn't, thank you.
Yep, we are going to get into that, yes. Council Walker?
Excuse me, thank you for putting all those disparate goals together in the spreadsheet. I didn't have much time yesterday to kind of go through them. And I was trying to get through them all this morning, early. And so, um, yeah, just, I can appreciate what the mayor just said about, yeah, it's a lot. And some of the things are kind of what I would kind of do, you know, call like a to do list, you know? Some of these aren't really goals. They're just like, okay, we need to kind of revise this or, you know, work, you know, make sure we, you know, what, some of these things are pretty easy and short term. They're not so much, you know, big picture goals. So I don't know how you kind of, I don't know whether you want to keep a bin list of here are some things that we need to do in the short term versus kind of the bigger picture goals. That's kind of what I saw when I looked through the spreadsheet. And I appreciate Mayor's comments about, you know, some of those are kind of goals and some of them are kind of just not.
Yeah, it's, and that is, this is the, this is the refinement process. And so that's where I've already flagged, and I talked with Jordan and Jeff earlier this week, where we flagged some that need some additional clarity. So we will end up with some high level goal statements, just to give you guys a picture of where we're headed. But there will also be, some of the detail is important to give staff the direction that's needed. And so that's where the ones that we flagged for clarity, we'll, we'll make sure to get through that today. Yeah, Kelly's saying some are task and they do, some of them do look like task and we'll talk through that. But, you know, we, we need to, people think in different levels. So some people think really big picture and others are thinking in a little bit more detail. So we'll balance that and get through that today. Yeah, Council Hockenson?
Thanks. One of the, you guys have heard me talk about this, but those, that idea of using that Carver governance model is near and dear to me. And I think it's really important, and forgive me, Sarah, for the facilitator in me coming out here for a minute, but differentiating between goals that we've defined here is this kind of two-year timeframe and these longer term visionary things that we want to achieve. It may be, and I'll just throw this out as an idea, that we have this goal to work on council policies. Maybe some of these really big, longer term visionary type things are things we need to kind of lump underneath there for development over the next year or two to kind of get a clear vision on where we want to be, whether it's that, Carl, forgive me, the biodiversity or whatever. It's, it's things that maybe are not immediately actionable. And that, that way, maybe we can parking lot those things, but in a way that allows us to work on them to really set that direction and then really focus today on those goals for the next two years.
Yeah, that's another good point. And it's a really common practice. So I just did City of Hillsborough's retreat last weekend and they, we did a similar approach where once we had the refinement phase, some of those goals were fly. And we'll do that through the prioritization process of what are the things that you absolutely want to accomplish in the next one to two years versus what are some of the other long-term goals? And those are the ones that'll fall more towards the bottom of the priority list. And it just, it doesn't mean that they're less important, but they're not, they, they may be the long-term things. So then when you get your summary plan, you'll be able to see that through the prioritization process. What are some of the more short-term things versus those long-term goals? And that's where that, that weaves into the process. So good question. Hopefully that helps to explain. Yes, Council Exner?
Yeah, real quick, Don, I agree with you. My biodiversity, last thing is more of a task, I think, than you're right. There is a goal and I'm in agreement there. Put those aside, maybe in a bin where we can reflect on those in the future time. But the, let's focus on the big picture stuff and make those goals applicable and like the mayor said, measurable.
Okay. One other just ground rule I'd like to, or just practice to propose for today, just given our limited time, is that there, throughout the conversation, and and this happens in every group I work with, is people want to chime in and voice their support for other ideas. And you just say, I support it versus, you know, everybody having to explain their position on it. That way, it works more efficient. So if you agree, it's great to say you agree or put something in the chat to say you support. But if we all spend time explaining our positions on everything that comes forward, we'll never get done by one o'clock. So is everybody okay with that? It's all, it's all good discussion, but we do want to keep it moving. All right, great. Um, just a quick trip down memory lane here to remind us where we've been and before we get off on where we're going. So when we did the context mapping, we had some themes that come up and just like 2020, you know, the impacts and impacting how the future, thinking about the future. But I think you guys did a good job and kind of, you know, and in your idea mapping, taking that into consideration about how it impacts, but also thinking, still maintaining what's, you know, what Sandy needs in, in that mindset. Acceptance, you guys had a great conversation around just acceptance that growth is happening and you guys need to figure out how to, how to reach people are, how to reach the people coming into the community, smart growth, being intentional about it. So anyhow, lots of good conversations around that. Just want to remember that theme. We already had this conversation about short term and long term. So recognizing that that's, that comes into the conversation as well. Let's see. And just, there's, it's a great city that you guys live in and there's a great foundation. So let's keep, build on that and keep headed in, in the right direction. Then we talked through, you guys did your, your visioning exercise, which was, you guys had lots of great conversations around that. And we came up with a draft statement and you can certainly offer comments if you'd like on, on that. But I tried to summarize all the main themes that came out of that statement in that in 20 years, we envision a gateway destination to nature and recreation away from the busyness, where we are connected to each other and our history of being pioneers and innovators, Sandy Way of Living. Sandy's a community that values neighborhood livability and thriving local business. So I don't know if that feels good to everybody, but I tried to, tried to take all the language that you came up with and all of those themes and and put it into a more concise statement. So certainly opportunities to chime in on that are wordsmith as we go through. If you want to raise anything now, please feel free. Otherwise, you can send comments and we'll, we'll revise for the final, final draft.
Sarah, the only thing I would add is, is I think you're at, you've done a good job there of probably the heart and the tenor of where we want to go. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there may be some wordsmith stuff and some moving things around, but I think that's a pretty good representation of what we were all talking about. So thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. Great. There's a lot of good stuff that came out of there. It was hard to, hard to narrow it down. I started with the paragraph and wanted to get it shorter. So anyhow, just lots of great context conversations and vision. So I feel like you guys have the good picture, the big picture in mind. Any questions or discussion before we jump into the refinement process? All right, I don't see any hands up. Let's, let's go there. Okay, so goal refinement. So as I mentioned, I sent out this spreadsheet for you guys to look through. And again, just try to put everything in a more organized, categorized things. I merged a couple of things where I thought it was appropriate. And, and so I'm going to switch from the mural board to just, we're going to work through section by section. So let me pull up the spreadsheet so I can just make the edits on here. And so what we're going to, as we move through this, we're going to ask for, are there proposals? Are there amendments in this goal area? Are there points of clarification? And then, and then we'll, I'm going to go through actions one by one to see, you know, which ones of these are going to move forward. And then the other ones, we'll put them on in the parking lot. So let's go ahead and share this. So the first one, you guys had lots of conversation around parks, city facilities and recreation amenities. That was how I titled it after looking at all of the ideas. This was all in that one category. And so some of the ideas for strategies that came out of this were a, you know, completing the Parks Master Plan, coming up with, there were a lot of comments around the community campus. So a community campus plan, figuring out, you know, how to, how to move forward and decide and take action on that. There was an idea to create a committee to guide the next steps for the community campus, coming up with a viable strategy for the Aquatic Center, exploring a, the formation of a Parks and Recreation District, expanding the Sandy Trail system, streamlining roles with Parks and Recreation, maintaining all of our parks and the cost to do so, city-owned ballparks, a larger city hall, a bookmobile and a bigger library with more rooms. So again, I want you guys to think about these things and what is really most important? As, as we mentioned, you guys want to be focused in the approach. So a couple that I had questions on as I was looking at them were, where was it? The streamlined roles with Parks and Recreation. I'm not sure which small group this came up in. And if you, if you guys recall, but trying to understand what that means. Yeah, Council Walker?
That's, um, well, okay, there's kind of two, two aspects to this. The first aspect, given this list of things, is I think what's important, we're doing a great job of putting together what the scope of our Parks and Trails Master Plan is. We've got the pool, we've got the community campus, we've got a rec program, we've got a library that does a lot of recreation programming, you know, things for teens and stuff. And so the one kind of big picture thing that would bring a lot of this stuff together on this list is kind of just defining what the scope of our recreation and community services are that we're going to deliver, that we want to deliver. You know, here's, here's what's, everybody else, you know, here's what other entities are doing and here's what's not getting done that needs to get done. We need teen programs or whatever it is. But kind of really defining like we have with the Parks and Trails Master Plan, kind of what we want for recreation and community services beyond Parks and Trails is, I think, really important to do because that, that drives, how much room do you need? And where should these services be located? In the library or in a community center or what? And so that's, that's kind of one comment. And then the second comment I would have is, yeah, the, how we deliver parks, trails, recreation programs and all that. As I mentioned, to, I think a lot of you have mentioned it before, but those are all divided up into about, you know, over the last few years, it's between four and five different departments. And so it's really for me important that we kind of streamline that into one organization because when everybody's responsible for it, nobody's responsible for it. And if we want to be really effective about how we deliver these services, we need to kind of figure out what it is we're trying to deliver and then roles and responsibilities for the, the staff that we, you know, that, that's needed. And that's not totally us. That's, you know, something that Jordan, I would expect be taking the leadership on. But, you know, the roles and responsibilities of how to deliver that scope of program for Parks, Trails, Recreation Programs and Community Services. So yeah, that's kind of what I meant is just really kind of reorganizing that whole department or, you know, actually creating one department and kind of putting it all into one department and then really reorganizing, redefining and, yeah, redefining and reorganizing how we deliver the services and, and get that done. And a part, a key part of that is just figuring out, you know, again, what we want and then how much does it cost to, you know, to do all that? And, and just kind of put a little aside, but, you know, what I heard at the last meetings was there was a lot of comments about, you know, we can't afford what we have and stuff. And my, my response to that is we have so underutilized the potential for volunteers in our parks, trails and possibly, I don't, I don't have a good handle on all the other things, but I do know in our Parks and Trails operations and maintenance, we have a totally untapped opportunity for far more recreation, for far more volunteer involvement to help deliver those services. So I think a key part of that whole reorganization is expanding the opportunities for, and reliance on volunteers.
Okay, Council Exner, we have a question or?
Just a point of clarification. I guess I'm, a couple of these items, I'm not sure that I know enough to be able to say I approve them. For example, one of those would be the bookmobile. I'm not sure how that one really fits in with what our needs are at the moment. I already had a good conversation, so that's something that I have as undefined at the moment. And I think at this point in here, if you're talking about strategies, I think for Parks and, and our green spaces, I think the idea of the biodiversity should come in here somehow. I would like to respond to Kathleen's talk about, Councilor Walker's talk about the four or five different departments. I think it is important for us to stay big picture in this area. I don't know that we should be defining who it is that takes care of that because that's probably Jordan and staff's responsibility. Our idea, I think I agree with that there should be a, one department that kind of focuses in on where we should be dealing with our Parks and Recreation.
Okay, so Council Exner, are you proposing that the biodiversity one gets, fits in here?
As a strategy?
Category as a strategy?
Yes.
Okay, let me go ahead and add that.
May I, Sarah?
Yes, please go ahead while I'm adding this in.
Yeah, so just a couple of items as I just, as I look at the things listed, I see things like city-owned ballparks, a larger city hall, bookmobile. Things like that to me are things that should be coming out of our advisory committees, right? Like those are actionable kind of items. Like, you know, like when we go through our Parks Master Plan and our community campus planning, there may very well involve city-owned ballparks in that process, right? But that's not, I don't feel like that's necessarily should be our goal in that. Like that is, that is something we should be getting from our advisory committee. So when I, when I look at these, I see things like complete the Parks Master Plan. Yeah, that's a goal, right? And that's a measurable goal. Community campus plan and progress, decide and act. Yep, yep, I'm there, right? Commit, a committee to guide the next steps for the community, community campus. That's fine. Like those are all goals that I think we, we set forth and we asked staff to proceed and move forward on. I just, I, I, I like those goals. I just think we need to separate a difference between actual goals and then deliverables that, that will come out of those goals, right? Like when we do the community campus, we may get city-owned ballparks, but the community campus should be our goal to achieve that. Some of these things are just outcomes I don't think we need to be focusing on. Just a couple of my thoughts.
Thanks, Mayor. Council Hockenson?
Thanks. I agree with the mayor on this. Don't all die of shock. But I also wanted to point out that I really think it's important to, in my comments on, on the chat, I said that I've been around and facilitated reorgs countless times. And generally, reorgs fail to deliver on the objectives because they're the leading thing rather than a following thing. So a reorg may or may not be in order, but I think it's really important that we set that destination and that vision clearly of what we want to be. And then it'll be obvious to everyone whether or not a reorg makes sense. So I'd just like to invert that priority and make sure that, that we look at it. And we do have these master plans. I just pointed out that do we need to maybe revisit, what is our general approach to community services and recreation? Is that something that, rather than dive into these specific things, maybe we need a broader, I hate more master plans, you know, because it seems like that's all we're talking about. But maybe we do need a plan that integrates what we want to do with these roles, especially when we have, we have competing services. I shouldn't, maybe competing, maybe they're complementary, but we have other services that have come to our community in the last decade that, that there's some overlap. How do we work together and leverage those community assets better?
Council Eatsel and then Council Walker?
Yeah, I think Stan makes a good point. I was thinking this too, is, you know, as we refine this list, we want to have a very defined set of goals. And those goals may take some of these other pieces of it. And it kind of like, here's your goal. And then you can have like IE, these are things that were being thought about, but that's not part of the main goal. Like the goal, you know, we need to refine these down. We have way too many things on these lists and some of them fall under each other, if that makes any sense. And I think that's what Stan was trying to say. I, I don't want to speak for him, but that's what I heard him say. But that's also what I was thinking as well is, you know, as we do this, we may find that we'll have three or four of those goals, but some of the other things will just be the IE under that, that, that will come about from advisory boards or from kind of more context, but trying to keep those more concise to the objectives because we can't have too many of these things. We'll never get anything done.
Right, let's see, Council Walker, I want to hear from you next. But then I would like to, now that you guys have had a chance to have some discussion around some of these. Right, I, uh, let's see. Council Walker, I want to hear from you next. But then I would like to, now that you guys have had a chance to have some discussion around some of these ideas and strategies, I'd like to kind of, um, you know, not be so focused in and kind of zoom out for a second and talk about what's the overarching goal, because I think that will help you when we get into which, which of these strategies are going to move forward. What's, what supports the overarching goal around parks, city facilities and recreation amenities? So be thinking about that for a second and let's hear from Council Walker.
Yeah, I think I was trying to um, articulate what most of you had said is that, you know, I'm not looking to, you know, start with a reorganization. What I'm trying to do is, you know, come up with a um, effective uh, recreation and uh, community services program. Um, and how that gets defined, whether by advisory committee or whatever, that's fine. And then that drives kind of the, the scope of your community pla- your community campus plan. And then, and, and then, you know, all that is dr- um, kind of results in a need to kind of, you know, eventually re, you know, reorganize and define roles and responsibilities to, to deliver whatever that is. So I, I, I agree with whatever, with what everybody's said already is, you know, our first need is to kind of define. And again, we don't necessarily need to be the ones to do that, but it needs to get done by somebody is just and, and with a lot of involvement from the public and the staff and everybody on, you know, what is the mission and scope of our community services, especially recreation programs. Yeah, and then, and then go, you know, and then that drives your facility needs and then that drives your um, staff organization to deliver those services.
So, just to move us along, can we, I mean, I feel like if we just remove city owned ballparks, larger city hall, bookmobile and bigger library with rooms. And I, I don't mind keep adding those somewhere as an IE, right, to like Jeremy's point. It's not that we oppose those things. I just don't necessarily, I view those as outcomes, not necessarily goals. And if we just start at complete the parks master plan, um, and pretty much keep everything there. Um, I would actually remove, expand the Sandy Trail system, not beca- again, not because I'm not for it, but again, that's to be coming from the advisory committee. So go from complete the parks master plan, all the way, uh, remove, um, expand the CND trail system, but basically keep it all down to maintain all of our parks and costs to do so. Keep biodiversity and then end it, unless somebody has more they want to accomplish with parks and rec here over the next two years. As far as like bigger concrete goals.
How are you guys feeling about that comment? Yeah, okay, so let me, so we're, these ones are all, you guys want to move forward on all of these. So I'm going to highlight those so that it's clear that those are, those are ones that want, we want to move forward on. This one we're going to strike for now because it, it's going to come up through one of those. Um, this one we're going to strike because it's more like an internal thing and would be a result of this.
Well, pause, pause. So uh, I've seen shaking head. So I'm okay keeping that. Are you guys wanting to keep that on there just as a kind of a broad goal? Dawn?
I think we should rewrite it as just an overarching strategy. I don't, I don't, I don't like to start with the word reorganize or even streamline, but I think we should look at the overarching approach to recreation and community services. To me, it's, it's a, it's a natural ev- it's almost overarching everything on top.
Point of clarification from staff, would that happen in a master planning process?
Um, I was going to add that, I mean, part of, I think that it dovetails well into exploring the Parks and Recreation District goal. Uh, we kind of dived into that a little bit when we started that um, work last year. Um, but I think um, we were planning on sort of bringing up this topic too, like through the goal, uh, sorry, budget process. Um, and looking at recreation services and recreation and, and senior budgets. Um, I think it is kind of overdue. I, I agree with a lot of these comments that we need to look at what Sandy wants to achieve um, in terms of our recreation programming, you know, look at what's happening in the private sector, look at how we compare to other communities. Um, and also I think it's well said to look at it in terms of what we may be having in terms of an aquatic center and community campus and other facilities that will be built with our um, parks and, and trails master plan update. So, um, um, I guess I, I don't know if that helps in terms of wording this goal, but um, like I said, I, the Parks and Recreation District goal might be able to, we might be able to expand upon that as part of that effort, looking at what the council and what the community wants for recreation in Sandy. Um, and then how the city organization can help support that either through a district or otherwise, you know.
Okay.
What we left, where we left off is council probably recalls is um, Aquatics and Recreation District was the the type of special district that was proposed in the polling. And not to say that's where it will end up over the next couple of years, um, and, and furthering that goal, but uh, that was one of the options.
Thanks, Jordan. I saw uh, uh, Council Walker's hand.
Yeah, and, and some of this is just a, uh, I guess a point of clarification. Um, I, and, and, and so maybe, help, help me out if I'm totally off base, but I understood that there was a desire to kind of muse, move the community center over to the community campus. And when we were touring the building the other day, you know, we were all talking about this as a community center, uh, you know, blah, blah. And so that's kind of where, you know, this idea of that we're um, community campus plan and progress uh, decide and act, that, for me, that isn't just, you know, I, I, I'm, that's kind of the, the program, the facilities, the, you know, event, you know, the cost. The Recreation District is kind of how you plan to pay for it all. And you can't leave with that because you kind of need to know what it is you're wanting to provide. But for me, the community campus plan, um, if that's where our community center is going to be, that's, you know, part of doing that is figuring out what the programs are that you're going to want to deliver. Um, so that's, I, you know, so kind of making that whole community campus thing more overarching with both facilities and uh, services. And then, you know, underneath that, that's where you kind of, again, once you kind of get that umbrella, then you start getting on figuring out the, you know, how to pay for it, rec district, staffing needs, costs and all those other things.
Okay, uh, Council Smallwood and then Council Exner. Oh, you're on mute, Council Smallwood. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry. Uh, guys, we're getting, I feel like we're kind of getting in the weeds here. And, and I realize everybody, a lot of people have some very strong emotional responses to the community center and the pool. But if, if one of our goals is to create a committee for the community campus, then that is that committee's job to do all of the things that we're talking about. And so our job is to stay as the policymakers and the, and the vision people at the 50,000 foot level and allow other people to work to create some of these solutions. And so I feel like I don't want us to get hung up today and spend the next three hours getting hung up on places that really are micromanaging in my mind to other people. So if we can, if we can work on creating a vision and then allowing these groups that we want to create, which I think are fabulous ideas to, to work and do their job.
Okay, let's take count, uh, comment from Council Exner and then I'm just going to work you guys through the process and we're just going to do a quick um, either consensus, majority on what's going to move forward. Otherwise, I think you guys could have a lot of debate around this. And I feel like we've got some refinement on the language, so I think we're, we're ready to just go through that exercise. Council Exner?
Yeah, I'm going to make it real short. I think I agree with the yellow portions of what you've got there. I don't think it's a little confusing is the library issues. I'm not really sure how those all would be forced up. I would like to see the library deliver something to us that's um, informative. But other than that, I think the yellow portion at the moment captures what I like to see in this goal.
Okay. All right, let's just move through this process. So uh, if you guys could just rate, council, just raise your hand, complete the parks master plan. Is everybody in favor of this?
Yeah, you might just, it's Parks and Trails Master Plan, not to be picky. We're in the weeds, sorry.
All right. Is everybody fine with this change and still in support? Seeing, yes, okay, good. Yeah, if you don't put your thumbs up, I don't have any way to know what you're thinking. All right, great. So we're, that one's going to go. Can, uh, so develop a community campus plan um, to help move progress forward. Uh, we're going to reword this a little bit, but it's develop a plan for the community campus. Yes, 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 yes. Okay, we're going to, I, I recognize the dissent on that one, Council Smallwood, but it's moving forward.
And my only dissent was because if we're talking about creating a committee, then again, I feel that's their job, but yeah.
Okay, um, and then the next piece of this is develop a committee to guide the next steps for the community campus, or appoint a committee. Is everybody in favor of this?
Question on that, um.
Yeah, point of clarification here.
Yeah, so there, uh, I feel like the, um, there's been two committees brought up. Um, and I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. At this committee, um, we'll look at both aquatics and the community campus. Um, because I know we've talked about an aquatics uh, committee. Um, do we have two separate or are we looking at everything? Uh, is this committee's charged to, uh, to help develop the plan for both?
Council, are you okay with adding aquatics into, into this for clarification? So it's not two separate committees? Hold on, raise hands so I can see who wants to comment on this. Yes, Mayor and then Council Exner and Council Hokinson.
Thanks, Dawn. I'll get to respond to your "I'm not" first then before, before you get to go. Uh, the only, I, I, I think, I'm just going to guess you don't because you want to focus on uh, the aquatic center. And the only reason I, the only thing I would ask you to maybe think about before you speak on this is, you know, when we were walking around that facilities tour the other day and we were talking about, you know, how the different roles and responsibilities of what like a district and a district board would be in charge of, of the pool versus the rest of the campus and how that all comes together. I just, I, looking into the future, into a crystal ball, I just, I see a need for that committee to really go through the nuances of those decisions of um, funding and roles and responsibilities when thinking of the global campus. Um, that's why I would want to include those two, because I think they, they, they intermingle so much that we probably want those discussions all happening at the same place. With that, I'll be quiet and hear what everybody else has to say.
All right, Council Exner and then Council Hokinson and then Council Petal.
Yeah, I had two comments in this particular one. One is, is that the overall uh, community center, which includes the aquatic center is a, is really needs to be all talked about in the same breadth of some kind. But I'm also fearful that the aquatic center is going to overwhelm the community center planning. There's just so many issues around both of them. Almost have to be a subcommittee. Uh, that's the only thing I'm having here. I'm struggling with such a big piece of what we want to do. And we already have so much on our plate. Uh, there's a lot of things involved in this one. So to me, I, I almost see in a committee to take the entire community center and then maybe a subcommittee to work our way through with the aquatic center.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, Council Hokinson?
Agreed. So the, the aquatics committee needs to be independent to look at the aquatics, but it does need to work to the point, Carl's point and the mayor's point underneath a broader perspective. We don't want just pool people looking at a community campus. We don't want just community campus looking at a pool. It needs to be a healthy focus on both areas. Is that fair, Mayor?
All right, Council Petal and then Council Walker?
Yeah, I'll just say exactly put, that's exactly what I was going to say. I think the whole council needs to be on the community campus as the committee. Um, but the pool itself is a kind of a, a subset um, for that. I won't speak anymore because it's exactly what I was going to say.
Thank you. All right, Council Walker, uh, anything you want to add different to this conversation?
Um, I think I agree with overall approach that it all needs to be integrated. There are some short term things dealing with the pool and the community campus that I think that committee would be focusing on. And then the longer term uh, needs will also then, you know, so it's, it's more of a timing issue, not a, you know, which structure, which need are we dealing with? There's some short term and long term needs for both areas. And oppor- needs and opportunities, you know.
Okay, all right. Has everybody who wants to ha- weighed in on this? All right.
Just one final point. We also have the Parks and Trails Advisory Board that I think, um, we just want to, you know, maintain uh, some, you know, partnership or have a member of that board as part of that committee too. We don't want to um, leave them out or forget about them.
Okay, um, let's see how this, how this lands with it being together. And if it doesn't move forward with it being together, um, as a committee, that includes the community campus and aquatics with the understanding that there is a subcommittee that has some more focus on the aquatics piece of it. If this doesn't move forward, we'll reword and, and do it again. So if everybody's, uh, who's in support of this as, as it's currently crafted. See, one, two, three, four, five. Yep, okay, great. We'll move it forward in this fashion. Excellent. Um, so does that then take care of this one? Can we remove this? Because the committee's going to come up with the strategy. Who's in favor? One, two, three, okay. Majority there, so I'm going to strike this with the understand. And then I think this is good direction for staff. Turn, as they think about how that committee comes together, that, that's one of the things they'll be charged with is coming up with a viable strategy. Um, this next one, so there was some wording that was coming up in the chat. Um, explore a Parks and Recreation District. Uh, the mayor said, you know, maybe it's, maybe instead of explicitly saying it's a district, maybe it's frame it as a solution. And that would be able to help you guys look at how the council and that, what the council and community wants for recreation services. And then how the organization can support that. We'd probably stick that in the refinement notes just um, as a clear, making sure that's the clear direction. Is everybody okay with? Uh, maybe we've just take that word change. Yeah, Council Walker?
So I'm, hate to be broken record here, but a Parks and Recreation District can only succeed if, if we have a clear understanding of what it is that we're proposing to deliver. So if we have all that, then let's start talking district. But if we don't have, know what we're proposing to deliver, um, you know, starting to go out with proposing districts, um, we'll line it up to fail and, and we can't afford to do that, so.
Okay, and I think that's where the mayor was putting in um, solution. And so if we change that to solution, does that make more sense?
To, uh, yeah, uh, 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 right. Funding solution, funding, you know, funding approaches, whatever, that's all good.
That's what I'm trying to do there, Kathleen.
Yep.
Okay, Council Hokinson has a hand up, yes.
So I, I think what you have in the refinement notes is the primary strategy. Uh, not worded nicely, but I think that is the strategy and one of the outcomes of that is exploring a parks and recreation funding solution. So I would reverse those two columns.
Any opposition to that?
Nope.
Okay.
Sarah, can I ask a quick question to the?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, so I guess, I guess I need some clarification from you guys as far as, as far as this actual bullet point. Because I feel like until the Parks and Trail Master Plan is completed, we can't, we cannot move in any direction as far as a parks district. And so I guess I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit there.
I think this is a point for this. I think you guys could get at that, Council Smallwood, when you do the prioritization. Um, and how you prioritize these strategies, so that, I don't know if that helps. Council Sheldon, I saw your.
Yeah, I don't, I, I think we should just move forward with what we have. And once we have a plan in place, the, the Recreation District's the funding strategy, so it would all fall, I mean, it, this, it's way putting the cart before the horse. I think we just need to roll with the three that we have for now. And, and get that plan going and then figuring out how to pay for it and what that looks like after a plan's in place.
Okay, anybody else want to weigh in on this one before we just do a quick poll? All right, so um, all those in favor of moving this strategy forward? Let me just see, uh, show of support. All right, we're, it's, we've got a majority there, so we're going to keep it moving. And I, again, I think um, you guys can weigh in on this further when you do your prioritization exercise. Uh, we struck the trail system. I think that's covered here. Um, I think we've covered this. Are we, are we ready to strike this one? Okay. We'll get rid of that. And then uh, these others, it sounds like you guys were good with, with the exception of maybe the the bookmobile and the bigger library, or is that going to come up as part of, will that be scoped in your parks master plan? Will library services, is that? Will library services, is that part of it? I'm seeing some heads shaking, no. Yeah, Mayor?
But you guys, we have a library advisory committee, right, and a librarian. So, they need to be coming forward with recommendations for the library, I feel like. I feel like we should remove that.
Yeah, Counsel Sheldon?
Just, I think a lot of these, we, these are things we can put out as, this is what we'd like to see happen, but it's, it's, these aren't, shouldn't be our goals for the next two years. Our goal is to get the overarching thing to give staff the direction they need, and that's getting way too far into the weeds.
Okay, let's just go ahead and do a poll on it. So, I went ahead and removed these two, because it feels like that's covered in Parks, Parks and Trails Master Plan. So, if anybody has any strong opposition to that, please let me know. Let's move through, larger city hall, anybody find that to be of high importance to move forward? Okay, we can strike that. You know, looking, exploring the bookmobile, is support for that moving forward? Okay. Biodiversity incorporated into Parks and Greenspace, support for moving forward?
That's gonna be incorporated in our Parks and Trails Master Plan, so I think it is being addressed, and that's where it should be addressed.
Okay. I'm just gonna put that in the notes. And let's just do a quick poll on that. Anybody, yeah, Mayor?
Just, just real quick, I, I, I'm happy to hear that that's going to be in the master plan, but I, I actually don't mind this council providing that kind of a direction to our, our Parks and Rec, saying, hey, you know, when you guys move forward in your planning process, we expect for biodiversity to be incorporated into all of that planning. I mean, that to me is, to me, that is what a goal from our council body should look like. Not, you know, I'm okay getting rid of it. I'm just saying, to me, that is, that is a rightful goal for this body to, to put on here.
Okay, let's go ahead and take a, take a poll. Hands up if you wanna see it move forward. One, two, three. Oh, four, all right. So, that's a majority. We're gonna leave it in. Okay, and then bigger, exploring a bigger library. Any, any, but any support for this one moving forward? Okay, great. All right, are you guys good? I think we're, we're looking good on this one. Ready to tackle next category? And we'll do some, again, we'll take all of these strategies and come up with an overarching goal statement for this area that, that summarizes all of this. Because I think what I'm hearing, based on what you guys put in your vision, and what you've talked about in this conversation, is, you know, having, having a robust recreation programs and services that, that support the community. It seems like that's what you're getting at. So, we'll, we'll think through some of those ideas and put together a goal statement for you guys as well. Next one, there was a whole category around planning for growth, and, and thinking about how to be intentional about growth and smart growth. And so, some of the ideas that came up here were starting the comprehensive planning process, updating the development code, and then developing short-term and long-term solutions for growth. And this, I think this was one where we needed some more clarification on what, what the, what that meant, the short-term and long-term solutions. That was one that I, we flagged with Jordan and Jeff as far as more council direction needed there. The other two seemed pretty straightforward. So, I don't know whose group this came up in, maybe it came up in multiple groups, but can you guys elaborate a little bit on your thoughts on this?
Rich, I'm thinking it might have come out of our group, and Kelly's comment about, you know, heck, if you guys are against, you know, planned developments, and you guys should, you know, pull some triggers on that. And so, I think that's kind of what it was alluding to, is, is obviously our long-term is our comp plan that we have spent a lot of time talking about, but the short-term would be, you know, if there really is, you know, an appetite against some of these things, there are some, you know, different things we can do as how we, we look at these applications as a council body. So, just to provide some clarity, and Rich, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's kind of where that came from.
Well, that was exactly it. Looking to see what we can change now, things like our code or stuff, make some changes now that we can always change quickly later on, while we develop a more comprehensive comp plan.
Okay, so it feels like these two, the two goals above encompass that. Well, one of those, a code update, development code update is a short-term solution, and the comp plan is a long-term solution. So, does that, is that right?
That represents our conversation, at least.
Okay, all right. Yeah, Counsel Walker?
Am I, you know, just to build on that, and I don't know how much, again, details we need, but for the discussion in my group had to deal with similar things of having clear criteria for approving or denying code variances, code zone changes, and PUDs in the short term. And then, the other aspect was just clarifying the, the city's overall goals on growth for both business and residential, because that's been kind of a point of contention. So, if those specifics can get incorporated into that bigger picture, that's great, but that's kind of the need that I saw.
Okay, and just a point of clarification there, that would, the, how you deal with variances in the short term, would that come up in the update of the development code, or is that a separate conversation?
I think it's a separate conversation, because the variance is just that, it's a, it's a variant from what the code is, and allowing that. So, it's a separate conversation on what guidance we want to provide moving forward for what's variations should be allowed.
Yeah, on top of that, I guess I would ask you, Sarah, for clarity on that. You know, going through these goal setting, goal settings is, to me, a variance is something that we as a board, that's what, we have control over that, right? I mean, that's gonna come in front of us. And so, would it make sense for a goal to be how we, like, for us as a body to have a goal on how we're going to work together to, you know, view these variances that come in front of us? Or is that something that just shouldn't be a goal, because it really is dependent on how we as a body respond to any, you know, provide variance, if that makes sense?
Great question. I feel like it depends on, and I see your hand, Kathleen, so we'll have you speak on this next, and Carl, thanks. I think it depends on how you frame the goal. I think I would suggest reform, reframing it as developing criteria, short, you know, short-term criteria for how to deal with variances. If you guys don't have any currently, if it just feels so haphazard every time this, one of these things comes forward. I mean, this came up in your interviews, and so I don't know if it would, if, instead, Jordan weigh in on this, or Jeff, but you know, it would be thinking through some criteria for how you're gonna deal with it if there isn't any existing. That's what I would propose. Jeff or Jordan, anything you guys wanna add to that?
Yeah, I mean, there's also the direction that the council can provide to the Planning Commission in this regard, too. The Planning Commission deals with a lot of variances, even at the staff, depending on the type of application, right? Type one and type twos, you know, applications are dealt with at the staff level, and then, of course, applications at the Planning Commission level, where they're granting variances. But that all starts, I think, with council direction, because that informs staff, whether we're gonna recommend the Planning Commissioner, City Council, some of these variances or not. Some of the things that we've talked about internally, maybe I've mentioned before, is, you know, back to this policies around growth, I mean, this, this could be one of those strategies embedded in the council's discussion about growth policies. Should staff, you know, work with developers more on variances for commercial development as opposed to residential development. Criteria is, you know, of course, the code has some criteria on that, but for variances, like, you know, the whole point of a variance is to kind of deviate from the development standards, you know, and maybe there is an opportunity there to look at, you know, what variances are more favorable for the council as opposed to other. You know, are we going to allow more variances for Sandy style, or for setbacks, or, you know, do you want us to get into that kind of minutia versus just a general policy on? We want, for now, we wanna stick, you know, to more of the development code as written, and, you know, not consider as many variances. What you're giving up there is flexibility, in case someone does come in with a proposal that, you know, may be better than what our code requires. So, you know, cities often, often get into this situation of wanting a, we've talked about this, clear and objective code, but at the same time, wanting flexibility to, you know, work with developers, work with, you know, people that wanna build something in Sandy, and allowing for some of that flexibility to happen at that, at the council level. I don't, I don't know if that, that answers the question really, except for, we can, we can work on this, but I think setting, having the council weigh in on policies around the growth, around growth in general will be, will be helpful, and maybe that's where this, this happens.
Yeah, and it's a, it's a short-term thing. Let's see, Counsel Walker, and then Counsel Exner, and then Counsel Petal.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Jordan just said, is that, you know, the, the issue that we're having here is that by the time things, or even if they get to the City Council, things, there's been a lot of already investment in things. And so, our criteria, I, I'm more than willing to, you know, support variances if they really do provide a benefit. I think the hard part is, is that we don't have really good, clear criteria as to what's a benefit and what's not. My bigger issue is not even the variances, it's the zone changes and things like that. And again, providing that direction, working with, you know, kind of having more in participation between the Planning Commission and the City Council to kind of, and the staff involved, and, and just kind of come to some sort of a consensus on how to approach things in, in the time between now and we get our comp plan redone, is, is, I think, is what it's important. So, having the opportunity to have a workshop, some set some direction, and, you know, ask staff to develop some additional code to help everybody work their way through PUDs and zone changes and variances for clear, a little bit more clear and objective criteria.
Let's see, Counsel Exner?
All right, first off, this comes from five years being on the Planning Commission. Those variances come hard and very well conversations and talk through in the planning commission part, and, and we do, we have in the past, as a council, given the Planning Commission direction as to whether we wanna be less hard on variances or easier on variances. For example, we have said we wanted to be more open to being business-friendly in the last several years. And the Planning Commission has responded to that, and I've seen more variances with that, that kind of philosophy in mind. And if we decide we wanna be more constraining, fewer variances, whatever that might be, I think that's a very easy thing to do. I think that should be something we should have consensus on. But I do not want us to be saying, well, we, we wanna be changing the code and on the council level. That stuff should come from the Planning Commission, always has. And I think they know the code, especially the planning department, much better than we do. So, if we see something that's wrong, we don't like the way some things are, are going down the road, we should tell the Planning Commission, we don't like what those kind of answers and decisions have been. Let's see some proposals to reflect that. And we are doing that now with the tree code. There's a committee that talks about how we don't like the way the trees are being harvested, removed by the planning and the developers, and we're moving towards a solution for that. So, I, I would say, update the development code is always on the table. Short-term and long-term solutions for growth, I think we could probably hammer those things out. Those should be growth things that we should talk about. And that probably comes out of the comp plan, too.
Counsel Petal?
Yeah, I think we're getting really into the weeds here, and I think a better goal on this, because we're just gonna do the details, and we're gonna be here all day. But even then, I think the detail, the goal should be something, and I'm not the wordsmith here, but maybe something to the lines of the council needs to come together and figure out what they want as a council, as the new council, and then also have a coordinated meetings, workshops with the Planning Commission as well. And maybe that's quarterly, maybe the goal is that is quarterly, or an ongoing, or something, I don't know what the outcome of that is. But me, more along that line of things, instead of getting in, debating right now on what those things are. So, hopefully that makes sense, but that's how I see what goals should be.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, you guys, I think it sounds like we could leave this off to the side as a refinement note, and maybe have this be the goal, and we can wordsmith it later, but going with what Counsel Petal said of, you know, the council providing some clear direction on what they want, and having a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to, to discuss that. I'm seeing some head shaking. Let's go ahead and, and take a poll to see if that gets at what, what we're trying to capture here. All right, if we could do a raise of hands, is everybody good with that? One, two, three, okay, good. I'm seeing a majority, great. Lots of discussion. I think you guys have given staff good direction on, on what you're thinking here, so, it's great. So, start the comprehensive plan update, this one that we just talked about, and then update the development code. And I think we can strike this one, because I think you guys covered it in the others. Or is everybody, can I see just a show of thumbs here? Are we good with these three? Okay, great. Let's move into, and just time check, so it's already 11:07. I've got some flexibility in the agenda, so we're okay there. But just, just so you know, we need to keep these discussions moving along. So, as brief as we can be with our, our comments and deliberation on this stuff is, is super helpful. And I think some of these will go really fast. So, economic development, we had encourage and grow commercial and industrial development, attract more business to downtown. Continue to grow Sandy Net through partnerships, complete the Pleasant Street build-out, explore options for childcare services, and foster entrepreneurship. This one is really vague, foster entrepreneurship, I'll just say that at the outset. It doesn't give a lot of clear direction to what the council wants staff to do. So, let's just kind of move, yeah, Mayor?
So, on, so first, I, I, I like all these. I, I think these are all really good. I think where we as a council body need to have a little bit of a discussion today is under attract more business to downtown. And the reason for that is, we've had a lot of conversations about growth paying for itself, right? And I think a lot of us would say that absolutely, especially when it comes in terms of residential growth. That's, we, we do believe that. But when it comes to attracting more businesses to downtown, there's things like enterprise zones, opportunity zones, obviously, opportunity zones have kind of passed to be able to apply for, but there's things we can bring to bear as far as, you know, we just talked about zoning requirements, bringing urban renewal funds to bear. You know, this is kind of an overall philosophical standpoint of is, is working with an Economic Development Committee Advisory Committee and our stakeholders to develop a vision as to what we want our downtown to look like, what kind of amenities and businesses that we wanna have, and then to allow our economic development team to go out and find those, right? And to recruit those, and tell Sandy's story, but to also make it more economically feasible for that to happen. And I'll end just with a quick story, is that, you know, towards the very beginning of my mayorship, we had an opportunity to bring a Marriott, Marriott branded, Marriott branded hotel to town. And they were very excited. They wanted to go into one of the properties adjacent to Mount Hood Athletic Club, and they saw a lot of like, you know, just a lot of congruency there, where they could have some kind of joint agreement with the club, where there are people staying overnight, could go use the club facilities and those kinds of things. But then they went and did the economic feasibility report, and we just weren't quite there yet, right? We just, we're almost there, we just weren't quite big enough to bring it in, but we're teetering that line. And not to say that we wanna go get a Marriott branded hotel, maybe we do, maybe we don't. But if we decide as a council body that that is something we wanna go do, we're gonna have to go incentivize that and, and make that happen. And, and so that does start to deviate outside a little bit of this growth paying for itself conversation, at least in regards to commercial growth. So, that's kind of a clarity in the conversation I'd like to see us have as a body on, on that particular issue. Thank you.
Other comments on that? Yeah, Counsel Walker?
I think with this whole topic area, it's, it's helpful for us to take a little bit of a opportunity to kind of evaluate, you know, what, what have we done in the past that's worked? What have we done in the past that hasn't worked? And, you know, what can we do better in the future? I think the Economic Development Committee is, is a great approach to doing that. I think that really requires more council input, too. I plan to be involved in that in any way I'm possible. So, I think there's opportunities, and, and, and I think, you know, regarding the comment, specific comments about, you know, paying for that, that's where I think it gets really important that we have a really clear goals, transparency, why are we helping, you know? important that we have a really clear goals, transparency, why are we helping, you know, the, not helping the existing hotel, but proposing a new hotel, those kinds of things that are going to come up. So I think it's really important to kind of look at our overall strategy for economic development. I think, um, the pleasant, two, two other points, the Pleasant Street thing, I've heard has a lot of, um, problems that doesn't have buy-in from the major landowners there that we need to really, um, kind of make whatever changes are needed to kind of get their buy-in and support because they're critical to making that successful. I think that, uh, also the childcare thing, I think we've, you know, again, it's not our role to provide childcare services. That's, you know, our role is to make sure that we've got, you know, code in place that, that doesn't hinder that opportunity for, for private business. So, um, those are the comments that kind of overall I have about, um, where we should be going with economic development.
Thanks councillor Walker. Councillor Exner.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that the first two lines there, the encourage and the attract are probably very similar and need to be just combined some way. As far as a foster entrepreneurship, that's sort of a very vague, not sure what that means, not sure it applies here. And, uh, the childcare and the Pleasant Street both are, you know, they just seem to be side issues. But I do know that we need to have a conversation about where we're going to encourage or not our commercial and industrial businesses in the city of Sandy. I gotta tell you, the last time we discussed this, it took quite a long time to figure it out. I, I think that what we need to do here is to say, let's come up with a conversation with council to come up with a decision about how, uh, we want to foster that or not. Uh, it's probably going to take quite a bit of conversation. I have personally have quite a bit of opinions and I know they uh, several other councils have that too. I, so I would suggest we make this a conversation point in the future to come up with where we need to be.
Do you, can I ask, do you guys have an economic development strategic plan? Yes, no?
No, we have, we have an economic development committee that is working with trying to foster growth and new businesses. I don't think we have a, if, um,
It's outdated. It's old.
Yeah. The one thing that you, one thing that you might consider that kind of would encompass all of these things is just developing a, a economic development strategic plan. I mean, that's a, a very tangible goal that would involve your committee and the council to give direction on how you want to move forward on some of this stuff. And it would help you facilitate that conversation that the mayor was talking about. I saw councillor Sheldon's hand and then I saw councillor smaller, Smallwood's hand.
Can we just change? Did you have something Carl? I'm sorry. Did I step on you?
I want to talk after you.
Okay. It can, it seems like we should just change the, uh, strike those and maybe have, uh, just put a goal in there that we, uh, I like the, the committee thing. Or maybe we can even designate that down to the economic development committee, but also just the goal to be to come, to provide the clear direction that we want to have for industrial, residential and commercial growth and, and just not get so far into the weeds about what that looks like for now.
I would be, can I propose leaving residential out of there? Um, because this is economic development. I think it's commercial, industrial and, and small business maybe.
Sorry. Yeah, that would be absolutely right.
I figured that was what you meant, but I didn't want to put words in your mouth. Okay. Councillor Smallwood and then councillor Exner.
I was just, I was just going to kind of, uh, take your suggestion there, Sarah, and run with it a little bit and ask the group, uh, if we could agree uh, to create a long-term plan for our economic development and then just house all of these bullet points, uh, inside that.
Support for that. I'm seeing one, two, three, four, five. Okay. I think, and I think this is the same thing councillor Sheldon was kind of saying, it's providing clear direction. So develop a long-term plan.
And I think that some of that Main Street parking down below could probably be, you know, some of that stuff in the next, uh, two, two bullets down, uh, might get moved up there. Perhaps.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm supposed to be next. So I'll, I agree with Kathleen there. Uh, one thing I have a concern for, I'm really in favor of an economic plan, advisory plan. But we said, have said no to a couple of other plans, um, because we don't have the time. Um, how is rest of council feeling about throwing another plan on the table? Um, even if it comes from an existing committee, uh, we can do a lot of work from the committee, but it's going to be involving rest of the council and I'm sure it will involve staff. To me, that's the only reason why I would not be in support of this one.
Councillor Pete.
Yeah, I would say that, that's going to come down to our budgeting process too, because the plan does cost money to do. Um, but I would, um, I would, uh, be in favor of that as it would be with a its own little department there. Um, and it's something that the committee was working on. It was a plan to have, I mean, it was the plant in the plan to do that. In the long term with the economic developments, uh, committee. But I think I, I agree with Lori. I think this could all be wrapped up into basically one or two statements and everything else be the bullet points underneath them. Um, I think we can move forward. So.
Is every, so just to keep us moving, is everybody okay with me taking all of these and striking them and just having this one action?
Sure.
Kind of. I'm seeing, and I'm seeing enough thumbs. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and do it.
While you're doing that, Sarah, if I can just interject, I don't, I don't think this has to be a big ask, you guys. I think we have, you know, David Schneider and the Economic Development Committee, Committee. And I think, I think those two, we can, we can, we can work on something there.
Okay.
Yeah, if we can keep it small, I'm, I'm much more in agreement.
Um, I, I saw a hand councillor Hokinson.
Thanks. I just, I had a comment on Sandy Net before we strike that.
Okay.
And I just, it, it's just one of those things as we look at it, Jeremy, I wanted to, probably should have talked to you about this ahead of time, but I'd like to see if we can make Sandy Net become self-sufficient within the next two years. It's not that far off now.
Yeah, councillor Pete, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I agree. And it's, it's been in the plan. It's been in the long range planned as well. And it's doing great as it's pulling back its, uh, paying back its, uh, loans that it's had. And and when those are done, it adds to that as well. So I think it's a great goal. It was a goal already. So no problem in that. I just don't know how it, if that would fit under the whole economic development, uh, piece of that, um, area. Uh, it's a contributor to economic development, but it's also kind of its own little department too. So.
We had it in, so it ended up, yeah, it, good point. It ended up in actually two spots because I, we weren't sure where it fit. So I, I also have it listed down in infrastructure improvements and maybe this goes down there and it, it can go out of. There may be some discussion in your planning efforts around economic development, but we can probably just keep it under, um, infrastructure. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. And I'll put, um, I'll put this comment down next to it there. Okay, um, I, again, I left like an hour for prioritization. So I don't want anybody to get stressed. I don't think prioritization, I have a, a very fast way to help you guys through that conversation. So let's go ahead and just take five minutes right now, take a quick break. So you can move and stretch and do what you need to do. So five minutes and then let's come back and work our way through the rest of these. I think you guys are making great progress. So 11:25, come back.
And that's where all the birds are accumulating. They always drink on the, the waterfall, but this time there, nothing left over. It's all iced up. Kind of fun to watch. And I got two cats that have, um, don't like the idea that it's really thin ice. So they're nervous and birds are actually doing pretty well now.
All right, everybody. It's 11:25. So hopefully you're making your way back here. Um, and we're going to jump back in to I'll share, let's, let's start this financial strength and sustainability and then I'll share my comment after that. Um, okay. So the other, you guys had some ideas and I just, I kind of just came up with this category because I felt like these things all fit under there. There was conversation around developing a COVID-19 kind of community recovery plan, thinking about how to support business recovery, utility payment assistance. And so that was one of the ideas that surfaced. Uh, and then there was a comment in there about diversifying revenue sources and analyzing new revenue streams. And then there was something in there about grant writing and grant writing. I just reframed it as to actually show up as an action as higher grant writer. I'm not sure if that was what was intended, but um, those were some three strategies that came up and I just categorized this all as financial strength and sustainability. So yeah, Mayor, get us, get us started on this one.
The only thing I would say is that grant writer, if, if that's our next full-time hire as a city, I'm going to have to be convinced that that position paid for itself. Uh, other than that, uh, to me, we have way larger full-time, um, priorities to hire as a city before a grant right.
Uh, yes, councillor Walker.
Yeah, Stan's right about that. And there's, you know, there's volunteers or staff that can do that now. So there's, there's consultants you can hire, you know, as needed. The overall aspect of this thing, um, objective, um, I think has to include, um, kind of exploring cost recovery and looking at, you know, what are the pro, what are programs cost to deliver and what do, you know, what are the revenue streams? You know, some of that's revenue streams, but you know, incorporating cost recovery, um, where possible is important. Thank you.
Okay.
Maybe, uh, can this stuff be incorporated into what we just finished up for economic development in that plan? Talking about, and I'm just wondering, if we're getting to be too many goals here, that it could be best put into that previous.
Well, I was going to recommend that you guys, I was going to save this for the end to see how this shook out, but let's, now is as good a time as any since you raised it. I was going to suggest that you combine these just into one category because I think financial strength and sustainability, economic development is a big component of that. So I would say just put this strategy under, under this goal. And I'm seeing a couple shake their heads no. So councillor Hokinson.
I, I would like to see financial strength and stability on its own because to me it's just a financial stability. And I think it's a very simple goal to make sure that whatever we do, we stay financially solvent. Regardless of the economy. I, I don't think it's part of economic development.
Uh, councillor Pete.
I would have to agree. I think, um, in that, um, two different things. I think when we go in through the budget process of our city as a whole, and we're looking at, you know, are we spending every penny that we have? Or are we putting in a rainy, rainy day fund and those type of things add to that stability? As well as, you know, looking at our maintenance of our buildings and everything else that we've talked about in the past. And so that's how I kind of felt that this, um, section was, was the stability of the, the general fund, the stability of the finances, uh, of, of running the day-to-day operations and those type of things. And so which is, I believe, completely outside of the economic development aspect of things. So that's my opinion.
Okay. Um, I saw councillor Walker's hand and then Carl, um, you can way back in on this.
Yeah, real quick, um, the, the financial strength and sustainability thing is a thing for all departments. It's, you know, how much we charge for things in the parks and it's, you know, the library fees, the planning fees that we just approved. Though, you know, those are all kind of that cost recovery aspect of things. So I don't think it necessarily belongs in economic development. It's kind of trying to be, um, you know, what are the other cities charging for things and how, you know, how can we make sure we try to cover our costs?
Yeah, just to clarify really quick, I wasn't suggesting that this get lumped into economic development. I was kind of vice versa, that financial strength and stability is the overall overarching goal. And economic development can support that. So just, that was, I think that got confused and lost in translation. Councillor Exner.
Yeah, I was thinking that if there's a way to move the COVID recovery plan up into the economic development, um, portion. And then if we want to just make a, a goal that we diversify resources and, and make sure that we have a cost recovery for everything that we do within our organization. I'm all for that. As a separate outside of the economic development committee, I just want to be careful about how we stretch ourselves across all these different things that we have to do the next two years. So I would be modified, okay with that.
Mayor.
Yeah, just Carl stole mine. So I just, I think we should develop, uh, develop a COVID-19 community recovery plan up to economic, uh, development. I'd get rid of higher grant writer and I would just basically leave that one goal that transcends every department in our city, you know, diversify revenue sources, analyze new revenue streams, look at cost recovery where possible.
And so everybody on board with that? Seeing one, two, three, four. Okay. Let's, um, so I'm going to go ahead and highlight this one. So that'll go in economic development and we can strike this. And we moved to that. So we'll strike that as well. And highlight this one. Staff, are you guys okay with this goal? Does this, um, give you the clarity that you need?
It's always a goal for us. Yes, we're, yeah, that, that works.
Okay, great. Um, let's move down into infrastructure. I feel like we've already, so Main Street parking, we already get, put that, that falls in economic development. So I feel like we can strike that. Is any, any dissent there? Okay, um, covered that.
Hold on, I'm, I'm sorry. I just, that last comment kind of bothered me. I'm just, I'm going to be clear. You know, that it's always, you know, it's just always a goal for staff. When the point is, is to be measurable, um, on this, right? And I, you know, my, my, as I think about how right now, and I'm not saying that this is done the wrong way, but every department head right now has huge discretion over their individual budgets and procurement of different items. And so right now, when they go into procure an item for the most part, and I can always be educated, I'm off base here, but they're making these, these purchasing decisions on their own. So part of cost recovery and looking at our, you know, financial sustainability would be, do we want to bring in a centralized buyer, right? That uses all of our, uh, purchasing strength as a city, that also gets a good feel from all of the, uh, different department heads of overlap of services and stuff in which we can utilize, you know, a central, you know, CRM system or whatever among different departments. So my only point being is sure cost recovery is always a goal in the back of our mind, but some of this financial strength and sustainability should be, you know, a real hard look as a city at how we can improve our, our day-to-day best practices in this regard.
Sorry, Mayor. I, I didn't mean to imply that, that I was referring more to the financial strength and sustainability is always a goal for the city to be financially strong, sustainable, but the individual actions within this goal, um, I think are great. Um, and you know, I, I think it also talks to the previous goals that you guys were talking about recreation, because that's another area again, that we want to have sort of a focus on with, you know, what kind of recreation program we're providing and what kind of cost recovery, um, those programs could, could give for us. So, yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, I'll get, sorry. I didn't mean to call you out on it. It's trying to keep us unmeasurable. That's all. Yeah.
Um, councillor Walker, I see your hand, but I just, I do want to add, I've seen councils set similar goals to this before. And a lot of times it entails sometimes bringing in an outside resource to, to look at revenue streams and do an analysis of, um, of, of your revenues and cost recovery. And so sometimes I've seen it implemented that way unless there's internal resources to do some of that analysis. So it very much gets to the mayor's point of it is measurable and you'll see some recommendations come forward for some potential things that you could look at as a council. Uh, councillor Walker, anything you want to add to that?
I like that, uh, what you, what all you just said, um, I, I would be concerned about hiring somebody else just to be doing purchasing. I think that's not, I, I think if we have the, the clear, um, processes outlined in our, you know, employee handbooks or whatever they are as to how many bids we get or what's the cutoffs and all that, and how much competition we should be looking for. The other thing I just want to kind of go on the record is, you know, we keep, we, we all want to see, uh, cost recovery with recreation and some other things. The other part of that is also with our police force. We have the opportunity to be, you know, writing tickets and getting more, uh, funds into the programs and grants and all that stuff for all programs. But I, I want to make sure that whenever we talk about needing to kind of make recreation more self-sustaining, that we also, uh, branch that out to other departments. Thanks.
Okay. All right. I, I think it sounds like everybody's on the same page here of it's really, it's an analysis of, of looking holistically at, at all city programs for revenue opportunities and cost recovery opportunities. Agreed? Good. Okay. I think. All right. So let's shift into infrastructure. So you guys had, there was lots of talk around wastewater, implement the next phase of the wastewater facilities plan and move forward with adequate funding. Um, there's a comment in there about the wastewater wetland. Um, I, I feel like this needs to be kind of formulated into an action. So I'm hoping somebody can add a little clarity on that. Um, explore transit route expansion, the Bell, Bell Street 362nd and Vision completed. Highway 211 post jurisdiction transfer actions, that might need a little conversation, uh, just to make sure that we're clear on that. Grow, continue to grow Sandy Net and then improve transportation infrastructure. I think this might need a little clarity too. Okay, I'm seeing from councillor Hokinson. Okay, I'm seeing from Council Hockenson on the chat, we can combine the two wastewater items. Is that true? Yes, okay. Staff, do you guys, are you guys clear with what that means? Is it explore the waste?
My only question would be to staff, when you answer that is, is do they need to remain separate in case for our partnership? Or something goes wrong with the wetlands, you know, should we continue to keep those separate? Just in case they're not quite yet congruently together. That's my only question there, sorry.
All right, I'm gonna let staff respond to that. And then I acknowledge I see Council Walker's hand and Council Exner.
So, we do have additional analysis to do with the, the Roslyn Lake wetlands. And there's, you know, that, that could take a little more time this year. But the, the idea is to come back and revise or amend the facilities plan that hopefully, you know, is looking, looking good. It would include the Roslyn Lake wetlands. But before that can be done, it'd be hard to adopt a goal to say build the, the wetlands until that, all that analysis is done. And we have 100% certainty. But, so I think the mayor is on the right track of like keeping it separate. But ultimately, it would be adopt a facilities plan or amend the facilities plan to include the alternative discharge analysis results.
Oops, I need to do.
So maybe, maybe there is a goal of complete, you know, the analysis of constructing wetlands at the Roslyn Lake as an alternative discharge.
Of complete analysis of wetlands at the, can you spell that? Is it R O S, Roslyn?
Yeah.
Roslyn Lake for discharge?
Yeah, alternative discharge.
Alternative discharge. Okay. All right, thank you for that point of clarification. Council Walker and then Council Exner.
Yeah, the, um, the city can create wetlands with trails if that's part of the wastewater plan. And that's desired by the awesome landowners that we have down there. But creating a regional park of wetland trails that requires parking, bathrooms, and all the other costs of maintenance, all the other costs associated with this idea is not part of the park's master plan. We already have a ton of natural area parks in Sandy to manage. There's a reason that the city of Portland and Clackamas County walked away from creating Roslyn Lake as a regional park. And I have big concerns about kind of making this out to be some, you know, regional park with, you know, wetland trails. Because, you know, having been spent 35 years in recreation management, the first thing you gotta do is provide bathrooms and who's cleaning the bathrooms. And I'm not getting down in the weeds, but that's kind of, you know, that's where I go when we start talking about wetland trails and things like that. So as long as we're talking about creating wetlands, awesome, trails for the trackers earth and the locals down there, you know, great. But any kind of mention of growing that to be some sort of a regional park destination or even a sandy park is where I'm kind of off the bus.
Thank you for those comments. Yes, Council Exner, what do you have to add to this?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of the Roslyn Lake wetland being part of any future park. I think that this thing has a lot of possibilities. There are many ways to develop a park out there. I, I think though, that the wetland is not really designed to be park-first, it's designed to be our process and how we treat and, and eventually return all the water back into the Sandy River. I think it's, that's its first priority. I wanted to also say that there are a lot of opportunities that are not just in parks and recreation that involve wetlands. We have wetlands within our city boundary right now that I believe could become not just parks, but also wetland areas that will improve our environment and possibly in the future, you know, as we get the money, as we get those solutions figured out, that they could become our parks and maybe some of our incorporation and some of the biodiversity that happens within the city. We have, we will look at in 20 years, the concern that we did not save some of those wetlands that are now inside our Sandy borders as a possibility dropped. And I, I don't know that that was part of this thing. I think some of this is all about the wetland that concerns the wastewater treatment plan. But I do think, I thought this one also included wetlands that were within our city that could be used as either wastewater treatment or just as part of our environment. So I thought this was twofold thing.
So I, based on how it's been rewarded, I think this is really focused on just wastewater. You guys added in the parks piece of it, the biodiversity, and you're working on your parks master plan in, in that regard. So I feel like this is really focused in on infrastructure and it's, it's about, the goal is completing an analysis of the wetland for alternative discharge related to your wastewater. And that's, that's the goal. So I, I note, I've noted all the other comments and about parks piece. But I, I think we're, if we're okay with this, I think let's go ahead and agree or disagree whether or not these two are gonna move forward. So it's everybody on board with implementing the next phase of the wastewater? Can we move that forward as a? Well, okay, good. Complete analysis of the wetland as this has been framed. Is everybody okay with this? All right, move that forward. What about explore transit route expansion? Is this a priority? Or was this just an idea that came up at the last session? I know everybody always wants to increase transit, but for the next two years, is this, is this something that's really important to the group? If so, question about it? Yeah, Council Smallwood.
It's not a question. I just, it's kind of a statement for the group. If you guys don't know, that the Transit Master Plan is, you know, been in the works. And so I, I kind of feel like this will fall under that and maybe doesn't really need to be a goal of ours at this juncture.
Agreed. I would almost say implement the Transit Master Plan as a goal.
Oh, how, how's everybody feel about that? Reframing to implement the Transit Master Plan? All right, I, I think, is there any dissent on that one? I think I saw enough thumbs to, to move, go ahead and move that forward. All right, I'll highlight that one. What about the Bell Street 362nd vision completed? This is a big problem, you guys all, yeah, Council Walker.
Are we talking about the street itself? Or, you know, what's, I, I, I guess until I understand what the whole vision is, I'm not sure I'm on board.
Can somebody elaborate on that? Yeah, Council Smallwood.
Yep, Kathleen, we're just, this, this goal is literally just talking about getting that road in and, and, and everything that goes with the road. This is, this is not a vision that, that, you know, incorporates any type of commercial property or anything like that, getting the road in. And then we had talked about, you know, some possible, I see Carl's message there, some wetlands moving forward. But that's, the, the road is the main issue.
But to staff though, is, will we, will we be, remind me of the timeline though, right? I just want to make sure that we're, our timelines are matching up. Will we be able to break ground in the next two years? And, and then before you answer that, the only commentary I would want to add on to this is that, and I know there's a little bit of an email exchange on this very topic. But so Commissioner Chair Tudie Smith did tell the Clackamas County Commission at their last meeting that she wanted to review pulling back the vehicle registration fee. Now, knowing the individuals, because this is kind of what I do, is this stuff, is, you know, knowing where the votes are gonna be, I think there's a very low likelihood that they're gonna have success in that. I think it's probably just gonna, you know, flounder out there. But that said, if they do have success in pulling that back, that obviously affects our funding for this. And so where I feel this is an important moment for this project in our goal setting is, is are we committed as a council to prioritize this project and to push strongly behind it, even if we lose out on that possible funding source from the vehicle registration fee?
Well, I guess I, we need to hear more about how we would pay for it then, if that's the, if that's the possibility. I'm concerned that we need to kind of have more information.
Can we go in order? Can we go in order?
Yeah, just, I see a lot of hands going up. And I, I don't want to get into the debate about, about this now because we won't get done with the goals today. And so I just want to make sure we can get a clear goal to figure out. I don't think we're here just to figure out the how, but let's frame the goal appropriately so that you guys can keep the work moving on it before all of these hands weigh in. So is there, is there a proposal for how to restate this goal that you can vote on? Yes, I see Council Smallwood's hand and then Council Sheldon.
Yeah, and, and Dawn may have a, you know, he's probably a better wordsmither than I am. But I, I think we can just keep this as is, Sarah. You know, this has been a long-term goal. It's been on the, since the 1940s, this has been a goal of, of the city of Sandy to get this, to get this done. So I'm okay with leaving it as is and we can work out the finite details as, as we go through. That's the point of a bullet point goal.
Okay, Council Sheldon.
That's pretty much what I was gonna say. The only thing I would say is instead of complete, maybe just continue with 360-second project or, or something along those lines as opposed to the actual completion, because that is still up in the air. But if we continue movement, however that ends up working out, then we can measure that at the end.
Okay, continuing progress on Bell Street 62nd. Okay, so can we go ahead and just do a quick poll on this? How I've rewarded this, that, that I think adds a little bit of clarity, because it's not gonna necessarily be completed in two years. But you guys can continue your forward momentum and have more discussions about the details. All right, quick poll, can I see some thumbs up if you're in support of moving this forward? All right, I see enough. Okay, great. And it sounds like you guys will have great discussion on that as, as you move along. Council Walker, did you have something on, on the next one? Okay. Highway 211 post-jurisdiction, jurisdiction transfer actions. I'm not sure. Jordan, you want to weigh in on this? I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I'm not sure what, what group this came out of. I think with the jurisdiction transfer, we have some small and then big actions that the city can take from signage for left turn sign permitted to, you know, pedestrian improvements along some of the stretch of, of the, the road. We, we are gonna have 500,000 transferred to Sandy for ADA improvements. But also, I think it's worth mentioning that the TSP is gonna be wrapping up in the next year. So we're gonna be able to probably prioritize Highway 211 projects through that TSP capital effort.
Okay, so the TSP, as you guys get into that, will reprioritize. Yeah, Mayor, and then Council Pete.
So I just, I, I want to respond to Dawn's comments in the chat. I think that's exactly right. Speed limits, crosswalks, new lights, to Jordan's point, the pedestrian sidewalk. Not that this stuff is gonna happen in the next two years, but we still have a fairly dangerous intersection there at 211 and DeBarco. And I just say, you know, we need to, now that we do have jurisdiction over that stretch, just that we need to do a little bit of some forward thinking on how those priorities land in our overall transportation, you know, funding and, and scheme of things, so.
Council Pete.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the transportation system plan finishing that would encompass this or not? So not, not trying to create more debate or anything on that, but just as the overarching goal. And then would that be a bullet point or something off of that? Or would it be just separate from that? And I, and I think if it wasn't a goal, we should have that in there to finish our transportation system plan as well. So anyways.
So just to help you guys move along, and I, Council Walker, I see your hand, but I just want to see if we can reframe this to get it closer. But you could reformat this to complete your transportation master plan and prioritize those projects. Because it's one thing to complete the plan, but I don't know if every plan always gets prioritized after the fact to give staff clear direction on what to implement next. So what does this?
Yeah, that, that's kind of the comments I was gonna say is that, you know, we can't be spelling out every word. The TSP should be the thing, the document that kind of identifies the Bell Street, the 211 and all those other things. And the other point I would made, make is that we really do need to explore the funding options, opportunities for 211. Because according to Representative Williams, there is some opportunities for, for additional funding because $500,000 isn't gonna do anything near what we need. So as part of that transfer, it'd be helpful to have some of the funding we need to kind of do what we want.
Only so, coming from the state, it would be nice to know if we wanted to go towards 211 or the wastewater treatment plant when we talk to these guys.
Good point, okay. So we've reframed this, complete transportation master plan and prioritize projects with some additional notes around some of the things, some of your desires for this 211 work. Is everybody okay with how this is worded? Okay, and okay with moving it forward? Okay, great. Sandy Net, we moved this down, or it was in two places. We decided instead of economic development, continue to grow Sandy Net through partnerships and, you know, with the note of long-term, the goal is for it to be self-sufficient. Is everybody good with moving this ahead? Yeah, Council Walker, question?
I'm just unclear on, and I meant to talk to Jeremy before this meeting, but are we trying to grow Sandy Net outside the UGB? I, I support growing Sandy Net within the UGB, but providing, you know, being the Clackamas County internet service provider is where I think we're overstepping, getting out of our lane. So if somebody could kind of clarify the scope of that, I could better understand it. Thanks.
Yeah, Jeremy, would you go ahead? It sounds like you've got, it looks like you got a response for us.
Yeah, I just like to say, and Dawn knows this as well, but when Sandy Net started, and it was actually more outside the city limits than it was inside the city limits. And from day one, it's, it's done that. What that has allowed is for, it goes back to making it self-sufficient long-term, is that money brings in revenue for that to keep those prices low and, and the infrastructure going. So as far as that goes, we've, we've always been providing service all the way through boring, all the way up to government camp in that service pretty much from day one. So that is part of Sandy Net's DNA. But, you know, continued growth to Sandy Net, it could just be that, or continued growth through Sandy Net through partnerships, you know, whether you have the partnerships part on there or not, it, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. But just the continue of the growth, so, which will go into that column C, making Sandy Net sufficient in the long-term piece of it, so.
Yeah, Council Walker.
Yeah, I'm, you know, providing internet to government camp and all these other places. That's not the mission for our city. And so I really have some, and, and we bit, we borrowed $9 million to make this happen. So I would like to kind of see us have a little bit more clarity as to how we go forward with sending it. It's such an awesome thing. I totally support it. I just, you know, again, being the internet provider for all of Clackamas County is where I, and, 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 and I get, you know, making it self-sufficient. But, but there's also just some, a lot of issues that we're not gonna need to talk about today. But I think we want to kind of have some, some discussion with that as a council. So that's, that's as far as and deep as I want to take it at this point. It's just additional discussion about the scope and the pay and making it self-sufficient.
Okay, I see hands, I have multiple hands that want to talk on this. But I, I think just we need to keep moving. So if, unless it's really absolutely critical to being able to poll on this, it sounds like, it sounds like if this moves forward, you guys will get to have additional discussion on it. Council Pete told, does it help with our polling conversation?
Yeah, but just so that doesn't get forgotten, the $9 million was for the fiber inside the city limits, not outside. That's just, I just don't want that to get forgotten in a later conversation. So, but I do want to move this forward. So that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, thank you. Council Sheldon, quickly.
Yeah, sorry, is the goal to continue to grow the partnerships or is the goal to make it self-sufficient long-term? If the goal is to become sufficient long-term, if that's, if that means bringing in new partnerships to keep that, that is one thing. But I almost kind of feel like those need to be flipped.
So it sounds like we could, and that, it sounds like that can make sense. So continue to grow Sandy Net to make it self-sufficient for the long-term. Would you guys be okay with reframing it?
Sure.
Okay, can I see a poll of hands?
Well, again, again, just to, you know, I mean, if, if self-sufficient means that we're the internet provider for all of Clackamas County, I, I, I'm gonna just, you know, have a little bit of an issue with that. So, because I don't think that's our mission.
That's fine. Let's just get to thumbs up and see where the rest of council is on it.
Yeah, I guess we need to poll on it right now to keep things moving. I, I understand your point, Kathleen, but we gotta keep moving. That's, we won't get done. So at people who are.
And you're wanting a thumbs up on expanding it as far as unknown?
That's not what the goal says. The goal says to continue to grow Sandy Net to make it self-sufficient for the long-term. As far as the how of that, you guys will get into that as, as you start to delve into the work on it.
All right, thank you.
So I, I saw a majority, so we're gonna go ahead and, and add it to the list. Again, you guys are good to prioritize. And then this improved transportation. And then this improved transportation infrastructure. I feel like maybe this is going to be addressed through this transportation system plan. Is everybody okay with that? I'm going to strike it. Okay, the next one was the homelessness. You guys identified interest in developing a homelessness task force.
Excuse me, can I have a go back on that whole topic? I mean, not the internet. There's nothing in here about water and Bull Run Water, you know, and and our, our, you know, they're losing all their customers. And and likely going to be raising rates. It's all going to affect us in the next two years, I think. So somehow, you know, I don't, I haven't kind of thought through the proposal of what that looks like. But we need to at least be taking a look at what the future water partnership with City of Portland Bull Run Water. Means for us in the future. I don't know how to.
Quickly move that forward. Can somebody propose a goal statement or a goal or a strategy here? Is it? Analyze?
Evaluate our relationship with our current water supplier.
Okay, thank you.
The water master plan will be completed, I think, this year or at the end of the year. If Mike's on, he might be able to chime in, but in that that decision, like Counsel Walker is referring to, will be a part of that master plan. And one of the key, I think, the key question for the master plan is the future of Sandy's relationship with Bull Run. Do we take their filtered water? Do we build our own filtration plant? How much more do we want to look at alternative sources and treatment to?
Okay, so I'm sorry, Counsel Sheldon, I was typing and then lost my thought. Can you say it one more time?
Yeah, evaluate our current. Water with our.
Water infrastructure?
Our current waters, you know, suppliers, relationship, I think, or some, I don't remember exactly.
Okay, we can, we can rework the. The language later, but I think we understand the intent here. And it ties in with the work you're doing with the water master plan. And everybody in support of this proposed addition? Okay, I see a majority. Let's keep going. All right, homelessness task force. Is everybody in support of this? This seems straightforward. Mayor, do you, is that a thumbs up or a question, a comment?
Quick, quick comment is, is I want to see more than a darn task force. I want to see our chief of police and our police department develop a plan on how we're going to address our homelessness problem with some recommendations for council. You know, I wanted, I want them to think outside the box. All I hear about is this Ninth Circuit decision, you know, that hamstrings us and ties our hands. But I want to hear of some alternative solutions to sidestep that decision. I want to know if ODOT's the problem with camping out alongside, you know, the state highways. I want to know what we can do to come down on ODOT, or if we can turn around and, you know, pull any levers with ODOT. With our, any control of the state highway to to add pressure. But, you know, we have a growing homelessness problem in this community. Many of us are continually tagged on social media and community pages and stuff about this. We can see it as we drive through. Our families are all growing up here, and I want more than a darn task force. Or if we see that we're going to do a task force, I want to know that what this task force is doing. And that they're going to have staff support to actually get some actionable items to address this problem.
Uh, Counsel Sheldon?
Yeah, I I think, again, I I totally agree with what the mayor says. I I do think there needs to be some action and it needs to be in a timely manner. But I also think, though, that it, we need to have, we can call it a task force, you can call it committee, you can put whatever label you want to put on it. But the reality of it is, the police department is hamstrung a little bit, and there there needs to be a collective thought process to this. And that would explore looking at outside places. And, you know, we aren't the only ones that fall into the Ninth Circuit. So there's lots of outside things of success that are going on, but we need to look at that, and it's going to take more than just the chief of police's job to do that. And he's very competent, but I think he's got enough on his plate. So that's, that's, I think, the idea that we're trying to get behind by calling it that is a collaboration to to address this issue. And and you're right, Mayor, it needs to be done in a timely manner, because we need to get ahead of this before it gets out of control. I think, I think this, the goal here, I'm sorry, that whole rant, the goal here, I think, is to start that process. We don't even have a start to that process. As we saw during this last snowstorm, there is literally nothing here in Sandy for us to deal with that, except some cops. And that is not your solution anymore. And I'm pro, I'm pro police, by the way.
Okay, so I'm hearing either two separate, separate actions, or you could combine this into one, which would be. To develop a homeless task force and create a plan. To keep it to two. All right, let's just poll on these two separate. So first one, create a plan to address homelessness in Sandy, and you guys alluded to some other things that would be a part of that conversation. People who are in favor of that? Can I see a, yes, yes, okay, got a majority there. And then developing a homeless task force to make sure that there's additional collaboration on coming up with solutions. Support for that? All right, I see a majority there. Okay, so we've got two actions for that one. Community engagement, moving right along. We're almost there. Two themes that came up there. One is just overall getting more people engaged and involved before decisions are made. This came up in a couple, a couple areas. You guys also had it under this council policies thing, but we put it, it was, it really makes sense in community engagement. And then the other one was, it was around a PIO position to be proactive in disseminating information. And I think the gist of this, the comment was more general, but I think it's an addition of resources the way it was framed. So let's get some, any, any conversation or discussion on this before we poll on it. Yes, Counsel Smallwood and then Counsel Walker.
Yeah, I just, again, kind of, kind of talking to the group. If if you guys think back on what we've accomplished so far this morning, we've created, you know, some more task force and some more. You know, potential for committees. And so I think, I think in those, you get more community involvement. You know, my last two years on council, we're seeing more and more people want to get involved in things like that. And so I, I think this goal, aside from, you know, maybe working better to create a communications plan, which Jeff has done a great job this year. Because that was something we were, we were, was a goal of ours two years ago. You know, we might, we might be addressing some of this inadvertently.
Yeah, so kind of giving a chance to have those things work. Counsel Walker?
Yeah, I I've been working with Jeff a little bit on just kind of some ideas. I agree, he's just been a rocket. Awesome what he's been able to do. The overall kind of gist of probably where we could improve, and I agree, the the advisory committees is one step. But just basically how we present things, for example, at planning commission meetings, those PowerPoints being, you know, on the agenda packet first thing. Because they're what kind of give people who, what, when, where, how, and, you know, not having to go through five hundred pages of staff reports to find that out. When we post things on our internet, you know, our our whole process has kind of been more like, we have it on our website. They can come find it instead of kind of reaching out and, you know, on on our community, on our neighborhood Facebook pages. I don't, I don't, we all agree, we don't want to get into, you know, Facebook comments and all that, but there's a way to kind of post stuff without, and, you know, turn off comments. And direct them back to the city page and all that. So so there are some opportunities there to kind of. And the reason I think that we're getting more, more interest in all is because, you know, things are getting more shared on Facebook and all. And that can be a good thing and a bad thing. And I think we want to try to corral that in a, in a way that is helpful and not overwhelming to us. Ditto with whether we all have, you know, we have a separate library page and a police page and things like that. Those are kind of the things that I guess I would like to kind of see us, you know, talk about and how we can. You know, let everybody know what's going on in a positive manner.
Okay, I think that we could get into, there's some comments coming up on the thread as well. I I don't want to get into too much of the details of this, like what's the over, the overarching strategy, I thought, for the goal was. Increase community engagement by getting more people engaged and involved before decisions are made. It sounds to some extent, you guys are saying that's already happening. But maybe you want to see more and and, you know, thinking about some of those ideas. Yeah, Counsel Smallwood?
I think it's, I I I'm okay with it staying there as as a goal for community engagement, because I think communication is one of those things that I, you can never have enough, right? But I I don't think we need to to sit here and deliberate a lot on it. I think it can just be that, that's our goal, and 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 that's what what we're going to work on.
Okay, all right. So can I get a poll on this one? Everybody in favor of this strategy? Okay, great. And then adding a, are you guys interested in adding more resources to disseminate information? No, we're fine with the resources we have. Okay, we're going to strike this. All right, this next one, I had some conversation with staff about it, because I I struggle a little bit. I've never seen this as part of a council goal, but part of just work that gets done. And because again, when you think about your goals, these are things that you're communicating both to the organization and to the community. And this one, Dawn, I appreciate your comment. This one, I think, is very internal for you guys, and I do think that it's probably important. But I I struggle with whether it shows up on a list of community wide, you know, goals that you're communicating to the community. Versus something that you guys agree to as part of a team commitment to work on and address throughout the year. And and that's kind of traditionally how I've seen it be done in communities. And I I was, Dawn and I had a conversation about this in this interview, but League of Oregon Cities released this past year. A new template for their council rules, and a lot of cities are taking a look at their council rules and working through some updates to those. Because it's just one of those, it's just a good best practice to periodically look at that stuff. So I I would encourage you guys to have some conversation as to, is this important? And does it make sense as part of a team agreement and commitment that you're going to work on it? Or is it part of the the council goals that you're communicating to the community? So again, let's remember our rule, don't restate everything. I know you guys want to weigh in on this, and I want to hear from you on it. I saw Dawn's hand, the mayor's hand, and Counsel Exner's hand. So let's, let's just go in that order. Counsel Hokinson, start us off.
So I pushed this because I think it's important, and it's also, as I mentioned early on when we started today. It's our opportunity to put things in place that will last well past a two year goal setting cycle. That said, I don't think we need to be overly explicit in here. I think we could probably simplify these, this to one line item that says, let's revise our council rules and look at updating our policies. As time permits, kind of thing. I don't, I don't think it needs to be any more explicit.
Mayor, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, thank you for that, Dawn. I totally agree. My only statement was, and we've talked about this, and I've, I've actually, I've had, before, before there was Dawn, there was Carl. Pushing really hard on on these policies. Of course, all three of us want to talk about it. My only thing is, is with staff, right? I mean, I'm I'm so happy, actually, that this was towards the bottom, only because it helps with my question after reviewing all this. Which is, how do we look, you know, Jordan and Jeff, from just a peer staff plate perspective, you know, to be able to really jump into these things? I know the Dawn and Carl's points are in mind. There is an appetite for us to delve into some of these. Obviously, we have some large priorities. How do you just view it from a staff perspective on timeline, when we would possibly be able to address some of these items?
Are you speaking specifically to the council policies and in diving into that, or in calls in general?
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, policy, policies in regards to how they stack up against the other goals, right? Now the stuff on your plate, yeah.
I mean, I I do think it's important. I think it's been kind of hanging out there, the council. I think within the rules, you're supposed to revisit the council rules every couple of years. As as Sarah said, a lot of cities are looking at the model. And I know with a new council especially, it's good to visit some of these things like communication practices and in rules of engagement and those things. Over the next few months, we are pretty stacked. I think one of the things that hasn't been talked about, but I know the mayor is interested in getting on the agenda, is like a work session on work session. And maybe that's where that idea, we can, we can figure out where it lands in the next, you know, several months to a year to visit these things. But I I do think it should, it should be dealt with. I think you guys do need to look at that. I think it's healthy to review the rules periodically. And not just the rules, but council policies in general. And some of those are going to fall under some of these other goals that you've talked about today. But in general, there's, there's several goals. And I don't, as long as I've been here, we haven't really looked at them except for one. And so I think it it would be worth the time to do that with the council at some point. I would say, kind of like what happened a couple of years ago, we may want to look at, and I'll talk to the mayor about this, but three meetings a month. Over the next year or so, just to get the amount of work done that needs to be done instead of just the two.
Thanks, Jordan, for that response. Counsel Exner, you wanted to weigh in on this, too?
Yeah, you don't know how much restraint I'm going to place on myself at this point, because I, like the mayor said, I'm very interested in seeing. We talk about council policies and how we deal with each other, how we deal with outside of the council, as well as within, inside the council. And we got some newer council members who not sure about how to make that all work. So I'm going to cut that short. So I think that is something that we should do internally. But the comment that I want to add to this is that I was one of those who added the, the first item there about communication between the staff and council. I think that there are a number of issues that are going on that I I believe staff is not listening to council's priorities. And we need to communicate that back and forth with each other in some sort of process that guarantees that we don't end up going down the road. With out those kinds of conversations to make sure we can convey that we are satisfied or not satisfied. With the way staff is doing some of this work. And I'm going to leave it at that. I don't want to go negative. I want to just say, we need to talk about our communication style between.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Exner. Counsel Walker?
Hi, thanks. I appreciate what Carl just said. I think the focus of this one, you know, we talk about council rules or policies. I think the primary need, and it is, it is something that we need to kind of address sooner rather than later. So when I hear, you know, in the next two years, I'm, I'm, that concerns me. I think it's something that we need to kind of deal with in the next two or three months, honestly. Is communication, is how we communicate with the staff and how we communicate with each other, and how we communicate with other agencies. Media and partners. So that's, I, and I, and if there's some already best practices already out there, that'll make that job hopefully more easy to do and get through. But it's, you know, I I think what I've heard from staff is that, you know, you got individual counselors coming and, and, you know, kind of telling them what to do. And that's not how that's supposed to work. I don't want to operate that way. I don't want other counselors to operate that way. It's awkward for the staff, too. So I really do think this is something that is a higher priority than some of, many of our other things above. It it's kind of incorporated and baked into all, to being effective at getting all the rest of the things above that we just talked about done in an effective and efficient manner.
Again, so I think you guys are voicing some, you know, some concerns, and then also just recognizing that it's, it's maybe time to address. It is a best practice, and it's, and there's some good models out there to support you through these conversations. And it is really foundational for any, any groups to work together, and given some new folks on the council, it makes sense to take a look, I think. So again, I ask if you guys, if this is an internal commitment, or if this is in line with council goals. And needs to be prioritized as part of this. And so I think let's just start, let's just take a poll on if if this goal gets, is included and is part of the council goals. Can I just kind of see a show of, a show of thumbs here, thumbs up that this is part of the council goals?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm, I wanted to start with this overarching, this revise and up, this is the overarching piece. It's really to revise and update your council policies and rules. I didn't put rules in there, but that's, that's kind of the overarching piece. Yeah, there's a question, Counsel Pete.
Yeah, could that be both the title of column A and column B and everything under that, just a subpoint of that? Because that sounds like that's what we're doing, and kind of expected that this, it always happens in the first three or so months of every new, every two years. So. I don't care for it, against it, it needs to happen in the next couple of months. So I don't know if it's the two year goal. But whatever people want to do, I think those are the bullet points of that. So I don't know if we need to go line by line in each one of them. That's just my opinion. I'd like to hear everybody else's conversation on that, but.
I do think if you guys delve into this, that these are all things that come up as part of this bigger conversation. So I don't, I don't know that we need to poll on each one of these. I I think that seems like a prudent approach. Is everybody okay with that? It looks like we're going to move it forward. There's a, there's a majority of you that, that want to keep it in the goal. So that's all great. So we're going to put that there, and we're just going to consolidate. We don't need these here. And the goal will just be to review and update council policies and rules. You guys can prioritize it accordingly. Okay, now we just have some of these miscellaneous items to deal with. Not that they're not. You guys can prioritize it accordingly. Okay, now we just have some of these miscellaneous items to deal with. Not that they're not, I hate to call them miscellaneous because it makes it sound like they're not important, but it didn't, they didn't clearly fall within any of the other groupings. And so they're just, you know, I think you guys talked a lot about master plans. And they're incorporated in the goals throughout. So I don't, I'm not sure if this is still relevant. Charting a path forward on the Arts Commission, Community Events and Celebrations, the History and Hundred and Tenth Anniversary, a fireworks display, Effective Partnerships with Outside Agencies and DEQ, as mentioned specifically, Law Enforcement Technology, a New Grade School, and Environment, Environmental Sustainability Exploring Alternative Energy Sources. All right, Mayor, I don't know whose hand was up first, Mayor, and then Councilor Smallwood.
I, I would just jump in and say, I don't know if any of these, I see any of the items under other ideas that would be eliminated by just removing them off of our goal document, right? I see goals that would support any of these singular items moving forward. So I don't, so I guess I, I'm for all of these things being talked about throughout the next two years underneath any of the top above goals. I just don't think that any of them need to necessarily be bumped forward into an actual goal, if that makes sense.
Councilor Smallwood?
That is almost verbatim what I was gonna say. So 100% agree.
Is anybody dissenting on, on that? Do we need to have more discussion on any of these things? Councilor Hokinson?
Sorry, yeah, I would like to see the Hundred and Tenth Birthday thing called out. I think it's an opportunity to roll a bunch of those things into the next two years, two and a half, three years. I think it's just a marketing thing that we can roll the community campus and a lot of other things under as we move forward. So and I don't think it will take any staff time to put it on the goals and say, we're gonna make a focus. I think there's enough partners out there in the organism, in the, in the community, Historical Society and others to, to make this kind of a cool couple of year focus.
I apologize to jump in. Where do you want it, Dawn? Do you want to put it up under like parks and rec and like kind of lifestyle issues? Or I don't feel like it should be its own goal, do you? I feel like it should be.
You know, I, I'm fine as long as it's on there wherever, Mayor.
So I, when I was looking at this, I almost stuck it under community engagement, but without having clear direction on what it was for, you could put it there. Councilor Walker wants to weigh in on this.
Am I, okay, I'm not muted, okay. Yeah, the, my comment with the part, part of that statement at the very beginning, talking about who's doing what with community services and community events. That's, so many of these things belong in that. We've got the library doing things. We've got David Snyder doing things, some of these events. Again, you know, what's our objective for community events and who should be delivering those services? That's where those things belong, you know, in the fireworks, the Christmas thing, the Easter thing, the Hundred and Tenth Anniversary, whatever, all belongs in community services. With regards to the New Grade School, I think that's kind of outside the scope of what we're supposed to be doing. I think it's something that, you know, the, I would hope that the Oregon Trail School District would, you know, might be reaching out to us on that if that's a priority for them. And, yep, that's about my comments right there.
Okay. Can I get a proposal of anything that you guys want to move from this list to another goal area? So we can move it forward.
Yeah, my object, my thing was move them to the community services, recs and community services.
Okay, all right.
At least the top five things.
I, I would disagree. I would say let's move up the Hundred and Tenth Anniversary and the rest of these, I believe, are, as the mayor discussed, were just really good events, good ideas. And probably all have very valid reasons to be done, but I would only use the Hundred and Tenth Anniversary as a goal.
All right, so any, any support for Council Walker's suggestion of moving these first five up? I just want to see there's support for that.
It's just trying to provide the staff of who's supposed to be doing it. That's, that's the important thing we're trying to get here today is we want to do it, so who should be doing it? David? The library?
That's what the staff have their job to do. I think that we should provide them with direction, that we want them to do these things. But then let Jordan and his staff find a way.
Okay. And then support for adding this Hundred and Tenth Anniversary under, where'd you say?
I'm not seeing the whole picture here, so I'm not sure which one, but I think.
We talked about.
I thought community engagement was as good as anything.
All right, so support for adding Hundred and Tenth Anniversary under community engagement. Can I see a poll? Okay, I've got a majority there. So I will, I will add that. Good. We've got now our prioritization process. Well, that's not gonna work. Okay. I will add this in a second. This is, Excel's gonna give me a headache here for, for just a moment. So I need just a moment to set up the, the prioritization process. I have it, I have it all drafted, but I need to make a few changes based on the the changes that you guys have made throughout this discussion. So if we could just take a five-minute break while I get this set up, you guys are gonna do, it's an online polling, and it's been really easy and successful with other groups, and I think it's gonna make this go really fast. So if you could, give me five minutes to get that set and just take a quick stretch break. So it's 12:22, come back at 12:27, and I'll have that ready for you, and we'll, we'll work our way through that process.
Hey, Dawn, Kathleen, are you guys? Still a quick question, maybe you guys know. Is there a, I looked for the planning commission thing that's coming up. Is there a spot where you can find the interview? Is that, is that done in a meeting? And if so, which one that you could watch?
The interviews for the planning commissioners?
Yeah, is that something that?
I don't believe it was recorded. I can talk, I'll call you and tell you about them and pass you on the applications and stuff. I think they did, did they?
Richard, we don't, we don't, Jeff, are you gonna chime in?
I was, yeah. I did record them.
Oh.
We don't usually post those, it wasn't a public meeting, right? Because there wasn't a quorum present. But if you would find it valuable to look at the recording, I mean, it is a public record, right? So.
Okay, yeah, if that's something that, I mean, I would like to review it, so I don't have to just go off a recommendation in some resumes. If that's something I could somehow get a copy of or be able to view somehow, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Sure, I can, I'll contact you after this meeting, and we can, yep.
So we haven't found yet? Yeah, this is, this is fun, isn't it?
I've been through so many of these over my career. They have a certain flow and feel, you know?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm, I'm actually really impressed, like, the way it's all kind of. I don't think we would have been this progressive or this, we would be this far along, having watched how we like to get down in the weeds without somebody facilitating it. I think that's, at first, I gotta admit, I was skeptical because I haven't done a lot of it. And so I was like, I don't know how this is all gonna work, but yeah, I, it's definitely came together faster than I think it would have been on our own, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, good facilitator makes a huge difference. I've facilitated a lot of these things and over, over the years, and I don't know that I'm any good at it or not, but I do know that you can't facilitate and be on the committee or involved in the outcome, because you have to be really neutral to what comes out of it.
I could totally see that. Yeah, no, no kind of bias at all.
Right, your bias will, will hose it. Because you, you won't get the buy-in effectively. You'll, every, half the people will feel like you ram-rodded a decision.
So Stan, are we the only ones with gas stations around?
Yeah, I mean, it's what it sounded like. I didn't know that, but now it sounds like we've got, I might have just created a traffic jam. Bunch of people from Malala was medical, medical assistants needing to fill their generators and stuff, and.
Yeah, so Camp, Campy had, they must have gotten, you know, we have, we have had the high wind, and then with the freezing rain, and some areas got more freezing rain. And I know last night, they were like non-stop on tree and power line issues. In fact, they had to stop the train, which is always really hard for them to do through town for quite some time. So I'm surprised to hear that.
Did you guys see the note I posted from Jordan? Somebody just texted me about a tree down, or leaning, coming down near Wolf Road by the post office.
Yeah, usually those things, well, I don't know, Lori, you probably have better.
Yeah, they won't, they probably won't do anything about that, Dawn, because with the freezing rain, that, that's just gonna be a perpetuating problem. It's freezing rain outside right now, at least. So.
I'm just passing it on, that's all.
It's, it's totally good. It's totally good. That's not to say, you know, somebody won't go out, but it's, it's gonna be a fun couple of days.
Fun's an interesting word there, Lori. Yeah, my daughter works for Trima, and she said they completely stopped everything. It was the first time that she knew of ever, but that they stopped all, all services.
Yeah, this is, this is crazy. And Portland supposedly was getting hit harder than we were yesterday as far as snow goes. Yeah.
My curiosity is, is this one of those moments we look back on and realize the world had changed, right? Like, I still work yesterday. My kid, my, my kid still went to school yesterday. Well, didn't go, you know, we're still. Right?
No snow days.
Yeah, right. So I just, it makes you wonder, right, going into the future if, you know, instead of a snow day, they tell the kids just to log in, you know, and do it virtually, or, and I definitely think our employers have caught on that we can, that we can keep working. So it's just gonna be, it's just gonna be an interesting world time, I think.
I, I tell you what, if, if, if school kids aren't gonna get snow days anymore, I will cry for them because I.
Yeah.
Me, too. That's, I was going to, I can do that, you know, I mean, you almost, you want that snow day. That's part of the grown-up experience, right?
Totally, yep.
Okay.
The parents to have it, too, with the kids, quite honestly.
All right, are you guys ready for this? All right, I have full confidence that you guys are gonna jump, be able to do this. So I use this software called Mentee, and all you have to do is go to this website address, and you're gonna punch in a code, and this is how we're gonna do the polling. If anybody has trouble with it, which occasionally there is one person in every group, I have, I, you can give me your responses via the chat or something, and I can enter them for you. But just the council is gonna weigh in on this. And I'm gonna present, I'm gonna get it all set up. So we start out with a practice question to make sure that everybody's in the software. So let me share my screen so you know where you're going. All right, so you should see, do you see at the top, it gives you a code and meant, it says meant to go to this web address, mentee.com? Can you see that?
There it goes.
Okay, I can, yeah, my, there was something.
Something happened. I'm sorry, I'm just not seeing it.
You're not? Let me put it in the chat as well. All right, so to everyone, you're gonna go to.
She did say, Mayor, there's one in every crowd.
No, that is, that is the web address that you're going to go to, and you can do this on your smartphone, too, if it's easier to have a second device to do it. And then once you go to mentee.com, it's gonna ask you to punch in a code, and the code you're gonna put in is six, seven, nine, five, three, two. And so to get us started, I have this practice question where I'm gonna get my restaurant recommendations for the next time I'm driving through Sandy, and I need to stop to eat. So we'll see if everybody can get their restaurant recommendations in, we'll know that everybody, it's working for everyone. All right, I don't know whose brother-in-law's kitchen I need to visit, but it sounds like that's a good spot. Councilor Hokinson, okay?
I'm struggling.
Are you struggling, Mayor?
I'm sorry, give me a second.
That's okay. You got this.
I got this.
You got this, and your, your technology's gonna support you. It's, it's good work.
Okay, and now I need a code.
It is really cool, and it makes this process pretty efficient. So while, while we're getting this all figured out, you will first, where there were multiple strategies in a, in like a goal area, I'm gonna have you guys rank those first. And this, again, helps staff figure out what goes in the next year of the budget. And then some of them only had, it was just the one overarching goal. So at the end, I will have you guys rank all of those, okay? So you're gonna get a chance to weigh in on, on some of the more detailed strategies as well as the overarching goals. Okay. No, staff is, and staff is not participating in this. This is just the council. But staff, you will get to see the live results. So, okay, do I have everybody's? It looks like I need to go visit Ty Home. Lots of comments on that one. I have not been there. And then I just need to improve my relationships with you guys, so I can test out the brother-in-law's cooking and maybe somebody's wife's cooking. All right, I, does, does everybody see their responses up there?
No.
Carl, no? Okay.
See a floating graph? Is that what I'm supposed to see?
Well, do, what did you type in?
My wife's cooking.
Oh, yeah, then it worked.
So, yeah, Carl's looking at the mentee.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're looking, that's, which is fine. And you guys are gonna, I will also send the, the report of this in the notes today. So I'll do an export, so you'll get to see all of the results.
All right, back on the Zoom thing is where our answers are, Carl.
Yeah, on this, on the Zoom screen is where the answers are gonna show up, but you, it will also, it should also show up on your screen on whatever device you're doing this. So let's, let's try the first one. Okay, so you guys, we talked about parks, facilities, and recreation amenities, and we'll come up with an overarching goal statement for this. But some of the things you talked about, I want you to go ahead and rank these. It was completing the Parks and Trail Master Plan, developing a community campus plan, appointing a committee to guide the next steps for that community campus and aquatics. And then exploring what the council and the community wants for recreation services and, and how the organization can support this. And then adding, incorporating biodiversity into plans for parks and green space. So those are the, those are the actions that are some of the strategies, strategies you guys talked about. Yeah.
So there's priorities, but then there's also like chronological order, right? Like, is it some of this stuff, like where we would need a committee before we, and then move forward, or are we just literally gonna do?
Yes, good, good question. I hope you guys are taking that into account as you prioritize them. So you did talk about chronologically, but just for the sake of this exercise, you know, try to incorporate that. Hopefully, it shakes out the way, the chronological way to, and again, this is to give us some direction as staff thinks about those short-term and long-term things to put in the plan. Carl, I see you can't increase the size. I don't, I, I don't have any tech support for that, but can, are you able to get your responses in there? So far, it looks like we've got one person has submitted.
I just now noticed that there's a dropdown, so I wasn't gonna keep them all in.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Okay, we've got three responses.
I'm assuming that everyone below that is the second, and then the third and the fourth. Is that what we're doing here?
Yeah, you just rank them and how you would like to see them move forward. What order should they, which one's most important to get done in the next year?
Okay, maybe I'm the one. All right.
It's all right, Carl.
It's okay, we're all in this together.
So you say.
I, I genuinely mean it, and I will enter your responses for you if that's, if we need to do that, because your input's important.
Talk to my grandkids about that. They don't think so.
For me, right now, how this is starting to work out chronologically, that's where I would assume we would want it to go. Not necessarily priority, like, I don't care, you know, we, we need to complete the Parks and Trail Master Plan, obviously, but to me, I really like how one, two, and three just works chronologically.
Okay.
It, well, and I kind of feel like the Parks and Trail Master Plan is already, it's already in the works. So I mean, there's really not a whole lot for us to do at this stage for that.
Almost done.
Right.
Okay, Carl, have your responses been submitted, or do you want me to do it?
No, I'm just evaluating and making sure I got them.
So if we were doing this in person, this is the part in the dot exercise where the one person's withholding their dots because they're trying to be strategic in how they place them. That's. That's Carl right now.
Well, that's not me. I am just. Okay.
All right, we got it. Okay. So. We'll note that and move on to the next one. All right, so now I'm planning for growth. You guys had three, three items that you talked about, starting the comp plan process. Updating the development code and then. The need to determine what the council wants and have a joint meeting with the planning commission. And this was in regards to variances. Again, we'll wordsmith this better in the draft report for you.
So if if I feel like this should not even be done, I have no choice not to. Select one item. Is that correct?
Yeah, you're part of the team, so.
Like it's like all items, okay?
Yep. Okay. Got everybody's weighed in on this one. Next, we have under economic development. You guys talked about two strategies here.
Are we assuming that there's additional funding coming our way on this COVID plan?
Or? I personally think we should, Kathleen, considering what we're hearing out of Congress and the president, I think we probably will.
Yeah, because I mean, if we don't have any more funding, I'm not sure what else we can do.
Can you show what the percentages were? Like, is it? Four to three?
I can, I can send that after the fact. I can't play it not in this screen. I can't. Okay, let's keep moving to the next one. I don't, you guys don't need to prioritize this one because there's only one item here. So I didn't mean to put that in. You'll get a chance to weigh that against the other ones at the end. Okay, infrastructure, you talked about seven things, so wastewater. The analysis of the wetland at Rossum Lake, the transit master plan. The continued progress on Bell Street and 362nd, the completing the transportation master plan and prioritizing continue to grow Sandy net. Make it self sufficient and then evaluate current water supplier relationships.
Just wanna say in transit, my faith is in Andy and where I'm prioritizing it. I just know we we don't need to watch Andy very closely.
Sure, Andy's appreciating the vote of confidence right now. All right, so we'll need on a few.
Real, real quick, just Jordan, I have a question for you. When you're looking at one and two there. Can we really implement the next phase of our wastewater facilities plan if we have not yet completed our analysis of the wetland?
Um. Yes, I mean, because the next phase involves. More than just the wetland, you know, it involves the MBR plant, involves permitting for the sandy outfall and continuing that work. You know, it involves, you know, collection system improvements, you know, so. It's basically moving forward with, you know, fixing our wastewater infrastructure. It's another way to put it.
Okay, we've got all of our results in on this one. Homelessness. Again, I don't, these two, it seems like they're pretty hand in hand, but. Go ahead and I guess just rank them. Waiting on one. Okay. Got everybody there. And then community engagement, you guys have two things here that you talked about. All right, we've got everybody's comments in there. And then last, this is ranked, so you have eight kind of overarching goals here, and this is where I want you to rank those overarching things.
Can you clarify, are we ranking kind of based on what we want to get done first or need to get done?
Yes.
Time wise or importance or?
All of all of the above. This is, this is the, this is to really let staff know what you want to be worked on in the next, what do you want to accomplish in the next year? What's most important? Okay. Thanks. There, I mean, and again, they're all important things, but this is just a way to to provide some additional direction as we think of how to formulate. That draft plan for the goals and then as staff starts to think about how to translate this into resources in the budget proposals that come forward to you. I was reading through the comments. It's hard to keep track of everything. Some of you hate this part, but this is the last one, so don't worry. You're almost there.
I don't know if Chief Roberts is still up, but the corner of Lang and Sand and McCormick. There's a number of, I would say, illegal. Vehicles on the road at this point, making some rather. Illegal corners.
All right, I think we've got everybody in here. So again, as I mentioned, I'll send out the results in the. In your notes from today, our final notes. And and it looks like the chief is still listening, so thanks for sharing that. All right, so the last part, we've got 15 minutes left, and so let's just wrap this up with this reflection exercise. Again, I think this will be an opportunity to gather input, and I'll have to take that input and kind of summarize it in your draft report that comes back. But I'm gonna split any staff that's still on. I'm gonna split you guys into small groups, and I'm gonna keep the council with me and keep Jordan with our group so that he can hear. Some of the council's commentary on this, and then I'm gonna put staff. In their own small group, and what I want staff to think about is what do you need from council to help move these goals forward? You know, when we think about how to formulate a team agreement to make it help this stuff move forward. I want staff to, you know, think about what do you need from council to help? Like, I think staff is, they can have their own conversation of what they need to do. To move the stuff forward, but I want them to have be able to share some comments with council. And so Jeff, if you could kind of facilitate that conversation with staff. And bring back a couple comments from that conversation. And then with the council, I want you guys, we're gonna talk about what do you need? To be successful in moving your goals forward from each other and from staff. So those are, I want ponder that while I get the breakout groups set up. That's what you're gonna be discussing. And I know there's, I think we have one member from the public participating today, so just know that you will. Be in the regular session while we do these breakout groups, and then we'll wrap it up with a quick report out at the end. All right, so be thinking about those questions. Council, what do you need from staff and each other? To move stuff forward. Okay, I'm gonna open the rooms. I will see you guys in just a moment.
Guys.
All right, guys. We made it. We're all here together. So. I, again, I hope you had a chance to think, strive for excellence. So those were some of the things from staff. And then Jeff, if you could recap some of the things that we heard from council. Are what what staff needs from council to be successful in moving these things forward?
Yeah, we 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 came up with four things. The first one is clear and concise direction. As we, so as we're creating new plans and as we're working on new initiatives, we we want to know what you're looking for, what information you need in order to. Pull the trigger with the decision. And if like, if we're working on a new plan, we want to know what you didn't like about the old one in terms of. Just that clear and concise direction. Second one was not a surprise, sufficient staff and financial resources to accomplish these things. Number three was recognize that, and this is this is important, recognize that some of the things that are not. On your list of goals may not receive the same sort of attention, and that's sort of the point of the goals. But having that recognition and then number four was. Trust and empowered staff to implement these, and then we will communicate the measurable results back with you. So.
Excellent. I think those are all all fair things to ask for, and Jeff, I know you'll send me that list because I was able to type some of it, but probably missed a few things. So thank you for that in advance. All right, let's wrap this up. We're only a few minutes over, but I do want to share with you guys the next steps on what to expect. So. Next steps here. Are we will prepare, I will work with staff to prepare a draft plan of these goals and strategies and the team agreement. It'll also include a graphic summary of your goals. And what's kind of nice about that, you talked about staying focused on those goals. Some counselors councils have been effective in putting, keeping those on the dais at everybody's place to remind you of the goals that you set and having that visual in front of you. As often as possible to to keep you focused. It will also have in the summary reports, some information on how to report progress. So I talked about this with staff, one of the to to make sure that this plan moves forward and it stays accountable. One of the things that, you know, Jordan and I talked about was. You're bringing forward a goal update within six months, so making sure that you have a check in point. And then in each staff report, when there's a staff report that comes forward that pertains to a council goal, that that will be highlighted so that you can see. How those goals are moving forward, and it's really clear when when something's goal related. Are there any, is there anything else that would be helpful from the council's perspective on on making sure there's, there's accountability to these goals that you've set? Any other requests? Yeah, Councilor Exner.
One thing that we've, we're in a practice and it sometimes slides, but I think it'd be really good to. To monitor and determine our progress on some of these goals in a quarterly or. Couple times a year. Standpoint so that we can see where we stand, so we don't have to look at this at the end of two years and say, oh, we didn't get some done. Others we over accomplished, but kind of as the years, two years go by.
So we were proposing in the plan six month check ins. Does that feel appropriate, or does it need to be more frequent than that?
Well, I think that's good.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, Mayor. What else?
I would just say on these for staff to hold us accountable, for council to hold staff accountable and for counselors to hold each other. And when when I say that, I mean, like, if you have a count, it goes to Jeff's point, if you have a counselor in with staff pushing for certain priorities and things to happen. Myself as a counselor as well as in in its last or towards the end of our goal, you know, of our priority list, you know, push back on that counselor and. And to me, if if you see Jordan and Jeff and I come up with items on the agenda. And you're sitting there looking at that agenda and you're thinking, you know, guys, why are we, why are we talking about this? This is last on our goal plate. There's things above it. Push back, you know, push back on that. I just, I think that we need to continue to just be really focused on our priorities as a community and make sure that our staff time is being added allocated to that. So.
Okay. Anything, any other comments on implementation or accountability? All right, Jordan, any final thoughts from you? On this process in general? Sorry, there was one question to the council. Should we continue work on the draft vision statement?
I would say yes. I'd like to see that as a work session. Let's figure out when we do it on our work session on work sessions. I promise that's coming up here next.
Okay, yes, Jordan, go ahead. I made that to the, I made a note of that as well on next steps.
I just want to say thank you to you, Sarah, and to the council for. Just, you know, three, four days of engagement, a lot of work. You know, and work that expand from visioning and brainstorming and finally coming up with goals and then prioritizing, and you guys did a lot. And been doing a lot over the last couple of weeks. So thank you. Thanks to staff for participating too. That's that's very helpful. Thanks for spending the time to do this with the council. But yeah, thanks, Sarah. We really appreciate it. Looking forward to working with you on refining these and bringing it back to council for adoption and. This is exciting. I mean, I said it before, I kind of nerd out on this stuff. I get energized by council goals and, you know, hearing about visioning and stuff like that. I think staff do do. Do appreciate that as well. And, you know, we're excited to do this work and help you implement your vision.
I just want to say you guys have done a lot. You've even tackled more than than some councils do in a goal setting session. So. Kudos to all of you, and thank you for kind of going along with this game plan that I set for you. I tried to take into account all of your input as we structured this, and. I just appreciate your participation, your engagement, your openness, just. Your ability to have really respectful and civil conversation. It's it's really encouraging as we think about. What our elected officials and our city staff are doing for Oregon's community. So just really happy to have got the chance to work with you guys and to see you come out with a really nice set of goals to help move you all forward. So. Mayor, any closing comments?
Yeah, thank you, Sarah, and thank you to staff for all the legwork and of course to all of the counselors who we and everyone that just put in all the time for this. Couple closing remarks. You don't have to love Ronald Reagan to hopefully like this quote, which is, you know, he. He used to say that anyone who agrees with me 70% of the time is not my enemy. They're my friend. And I think as we went through our council goals and visioning, I hope that we all found that we we agree. And share the same vision on the far vast majority of the direction that this community needs to go in, and we, that we disagree. And so as we move forward, let's not let perfect be the enemy of great or even good. And, you know, let's continue to compromise and join our visions together and realize and just continue to focus on. One is one of our rules, which is it's we're all coming from the right place. That we all love Sandy and we all want just what's best for this community. And then two is let's just let's try to compromise, you know, let's try to get to yes, let's always strive to get to yes instead of no. And let's just have that recognition that we should be able to agree and figure this thing out. Far more often than than we disagree. And so with that, just we have a lot to do. A lot to get done, a lot of very exciting things, and I hope that we're all a little energized from this process and ready to jump into these council meetings and. And deep dive these issues. And I just, as we've all talked, I just, I I know we all have our own skill sets and backgrounds and experiences that are just gonna make this a great two years. So thank you again to everybody, and hopefully you enjoy the snow and your maybe a three day weekend for some maybe a little bit more. Thank you again for your time today.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Have a great rest of your weekend.
Thank you.